Begin the meeting with a bang there. Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for October 4th, 2016. Could we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Foy. Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Seracosa.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. And for our pledge of allegiance, Supervisor Foy, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with original justice for all.
And it will now go to the minutes of the meeting of September 27. We have a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Foy. If we could all please vote. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our agenda review with our CEO, Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Parks. Item 23, Fire Protection District Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Ordinance Number 29 Adopting Fire Apparatus Access Requirements. Exhibit 1 has been submitted. Item 24, Fire Protection District Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Ordinance Number 30 Adopting the 2016 California Fire Code and Repealing Ordinance Number 28. Exhibits 1, 2, 3, and 4 have been submitted. Item 27, Supervisor Foy Receiving File Report From the California Highway Patrol on the Status of the Ventura County Auto Theft Task Force Request To Continue. Item 29, District Attorney Ratification Of The District Attorney's Application For An Acceptance Of Victim Services XC Program Grant Funds. Agenda Page 7 Agenda Title Only Was Changed From Court Appointed Special Advocates For Children Of Ventura County Inc. To CASA Of Ventura County Inc. Item 31, Resource Management De novo Hearing To Consider The Request That A Conditional Use Permit Be Granted For The Installation, Operation, And Maintenance Of A Wireless Telecommunication Facility. A PowerPoint has been submitted. Finally, Item 33, CEO's Office Approval Of Flexible Benefits Program And Health Benefits Rates And Contract Providers For 2017. Revised Board Letter And Exhibit 4 Have Been Submitted. In addition, Agenda Page 8 Was Changed To Add Quote "An Authorization For County Of Ventura To Become A Member Of The Public Agency Consortium Enterprise Joint Powers Authority." And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. We have some recommended changes to our agenda, any others? If not, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as revised? We have a motion and a second, and if we could please vote. Thank you, that is also approved unanimously. And now, our moment of inspiration, we have Linnea Hall. Dr. Hall is with the Western Foundation of Vertebrate Zoology. She's the executive director there for 14 years, and she's also an adjunct curator of collections at UCSB and an assistant professor at California State University. She has conducted more than 50 research projects on wildlife, published and edited more than 70 articles, reports, and books, and given numerous courses and lectures on the subjects of bird ecology, conservation, and biology. She also volunteers her time assisting national professional wildlife societies such as the American Ornithologist Union and the Cooper Ornithological Society. She advises local resource agencies and organizations such as the National Park Service and the Nature Conservancy, and teaches courses and individual classes for teachers and students at UC Santa Barbara, CSU Channel Islands, and Ventura County K-12 schools and community colleges. I had the good fortune of being at the foundation yesterday evening, and it is just incredibly fabulous, and I'm sure you're here to tell us about it in your open house and all, so welcome.
I am, thank you very much Supervisor Parks. I do have some flyers about our open house that's coming up on October 22nd, so do I give those to Brian?
Thank you so much. Yes, so thank you very much Supervisor Parks for the invitation to give you your moment of inspiration today, and thank you also to the rest of the board for the privilege of being here to speak with you. Last April, I was invited by Supervisor Long to provide some inspiration in honor of Earth Day. That day, I highlighted environmental contributions made by members of the Board of Supervisors that make me and my organization proud to be rooted in Ventura County. These contributions range from SOAR to protecting Ormond Beach and Ventura River wetlands, to creating connectivity among protected areas, to developing bike paths throughout the county, to supporting a parkway along the Santa Clara River. Today, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the Western Foundation of Vertebrate Zoology's contributions to our community. And by the way, our short name is the Bird Museum of Camarillo, or just the WFBC. The Western Foundation of Vertebrate Zoology is a natural history museum that specializes in bird materials. We actually have the largest collection of birds' nests and birds' eggs in the world, more than a million-plus specimens.
In the world?
In the world, in the world. And it's a collection that goes back 200 years, so there are specimens that represent more than two-thirds of the world's bird species, and a range of geographic distributions and worldwide localities. It's quite an amazing collection. We're primarily a scientific institution, but we also educate the public and professionals, as Ms. Parks said, about the ecology of birds. We've been in Ventura County since 1992, and in existence since 1956, so this is actually our 60-year anniversary. Our mission is to make our lots of specimens, million-plus specimens, available to researchers, educators, students, and the public for the study and conservation of the world's wild bird species. Scientific researchers from all over the world use our materials, and they now can access hundreds of thousands of our records digitally through the Internet. Since the 1950s, we've contributed information to thousands of projects on birds, everything from supplying tissues for genetic studies that have bearing on the formal protection of species, to measuring DDT levels, and eggshell thinning for birds nesting on the Channel Islands, to collecting breeding data for birds in the Santa Clara River, Ormond Beach, Santa Monica Mountains, and to working in Guatemala and other Central American and South American countries documenting the pollution that occur there and their impact on both humans and wildlife. In addition, we teach about 2,000 residents of Ventura County each year about the ecology and biology of birds in public events and through formal classes. But I wanted to ask you, why does all this matter, and how does this relate to you? First of all, it matters in the sense of the birds themselves. There was a report released in 2014 that summarized nearly 100 years of monitoring data on birds for the United States that shows that 50% of all bird species in the United States are seriously declining. That means even common bird species. For example, even species in the top 25% in terms of commonness in the United States have declined from 50% to 96% over the last 40 years. In the United States alone, more than a billion birds are killed every year due to all kinds of perils. In Ventura County alone, the Western Foundation receives more than 1,000 dead birds every year that we process, add to our collections, or have to dispose of because they've been hit by cars, they've run into windows, they've been killed by cats. The Western Foundation holds that if we teach the public about the birds that we have left, what they look like and what they need to actually survive, we can have an informed citizenry that acts to protect species before they're driven to extinction. We all remember from school the passenger pigeon, which had an estimated population size of 5 billion birds, but was exterminated in fewer than 150 years. The Western Foundation is working to prevent additional such extinctions. Next, many studies recently have shown that children and young adults in urban areas all over the world are experiencing attention difficulties, higher rates of physical illnesses, including allergies and nearsightedness, just to name a simple couple of illnesses, and increased emotional illnesses. Research has also demonstrated that a significant number of these difficulties can be attributed to a malady referred to now as nature deficit disorder, which is created when young people are separated from nature as they grow up. Poor, inner-city, urban children are affected by this because they lack access to safe and convenient outdoor natural areas in their communities. More affluent children are also affected by this due to their dependence on technology nowadays and to a lack of outdoor exercise. The Western Foundation contends that teaching about the gifts that nature provides for all of us, the wildlife, the beaches, the rivers, our chaparral-covered hillsides, and the forests that belong to all of us, can help children overcome these deficits in their development. We offer linkages to nature and to the sciences for the citizens of Ventura County and beyond. All natural history museums play an important role in educating the public because we link people with information about the creatures and the environments that they share their spaces with. As I mentioned in the beginning of the talk, I'm proud to live in Ventura County because of the natural beauty that's still here. I am proud to be in a county where open space is valued, not just for agriculture, but also for its value to the wildlife and plants that rely on it, and to the people who live in our busy, modern world who desperately need nature's beauty to recharge them. So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued work to make this county feel like nature is still welcome here. I also want to invite you to visit the Western Foundation to learn more about the more than 400 species of birds that actually use this county, the perils they face, and the work that's being done to assist them. And I hope that I leave you with some amount of inspiration to continue championing the nature that we all love in Ventura County for the sake of our children and the creatures that we share this county with. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this morning, I really appreciate it. You made some wonderful statements, looking at, from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy that I serve on, we talked about how much more crowded the trails are becoming as people are realizing that they're so local and accessible, and how wonderful that is, but you realize as the population grows, we're not really adding more to the open space network, and certainly not keeping up with the population. So it is something that we definitely want to make sure is accessible to our children. The whole thing with nature deficit disorder is a real thing. We know how soothing it is to the mind and for the body to be able to get out in open space.
Well, thank you very much.
And startling also, the 50% of the birds decline, I hear that's also with songbirds too.
Oh, it's all birds, yeah.
And I don't know if you have recommendations, I've seen studies that show how these birds are dying, hitting buildings and all, if there's something we can do with windows or if you have that.
We have brochures, we have other information, and I teach classes on this at the Western Foundation, so if people want to come to the open house, we can give them brochures and information they can take home to prevent deaths of birds at their own homes, but also I could share those with, that literature with the board if you'd be interested.
I think it'd be great for our.
That you could pass out or have available.
Yeah, and even our building department might be able to look and see if there might be things that we can have builders who are, you know, building buildings make sure that they take into consideration.
Oh, that would be wonderful, that would be wonderful, thank you very much for considering that.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thanks for your patience.
Does it show?
It's always been out there, and it was here again today.
Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you so much. It truly is a treasure for us to have this in our county and in Camarillo, and to continue promoting and advocacy, and I know you do tremendous with work with education of our youth in schools and other, you know, posting your open house on the government channels of the cities where possible, so more people do get that exposure and opportunity to come see what a wonderful facility it is.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
People can attend the open house October 22nd from 10:00 to 4:00. If you haven't been there, you have to check it out, Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Okay.
See you, Diana. Great.
And now, we'll go ahead and go to our consent agenda items. Yes, that's right, and then we'll go to public comments. So consent agenda items are 11 through 18.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have on item 11, just a comment to make, I don't really need the clerk recorder here, and item 14, I do have a question on that, and.
Okay, well, right now, we do have, I know I saw Ms. Crandall here.
Okay.
And while she comes up, hopefully someone from the clerk recorder's office, if they're not here.
Well, they really don't have to be here, it's really just more commentary.
Okay, okay.
But on item, okay, then, item 14. Yeah, thank you, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, I'd like to introduce to you Patrick Zerate.
Thank you.
He is our COO and also manages all our ADP programs.
And I understand that this is ratification, approval, and authorization of this preventive services grant.
Yes, it is.
A question in it, and there's a statistic in there that young adults 18 to 24 in Ventura County's DUI program represent 24% of the program participates. However, it remains unclear the exact link if there's a problem in Ventura County regarding teens and younger adult drivers under the influence of marijuana, or just the outreach is a good thing to do, and also, it seems it would be good to have more statistics of the problem of the demographic within Ventura County than just a national perception to be engaged more. So just some thoughts on the statistics side of it, if there's any comment to be.
I just would like to say, generally speaking, when we are looking at national statistics, we can only extrapolate what our local area needs, so being more specific about what we know about our county and how each of our, and within our county, each of the jurisdictions, what their particular needs are, helps us to focus what kinds and by what method any kind of outreach or education would be most useful.
Okay, so I know we really have stepped up our ability to collect the data to be able to then drill down at some point, more than just extrapolate, to really have a clear picture of what we're challenged with, because as we answer all the questions related to that ballot initiative in November, we'll be challenged even more.
Absolutely, and we've been working also very closely with the schools and all of our local partners, because information gathering is just the first step. You know, at some point, we will, we do now, and very likely will need to step up our, both our prevention and our treatment modalities.
Okay, thank you. Then, if you want, same area, item 15, again, approval, authorization for MOU. My question on that is, the reference to career pathways as a purpose for the MOU, and in the board letter that this program and prevention services already exist, so my question, is there a coordination with the WIB, is there coordination with HSA, all the above?
I'm going to have to ask one of you to talk about the career pathways, thank you.
This is with Fillmore Unified.
Yes, so there is coordination, but we'd like to enhance internal and external coordination, particularly with respect to keeping young people in school and not be referred out. Traditionally, folks are, when they encounter a problem, may be more likely to get a punitive or a suspension type of consequence rather than, or a treatment plan versus a prevention plan. So the idea is to keep young people in school and upskill the staff and the ability to call on outside resources to maintain that health and prevention orientation as opposed to a referral out.
I just would certainly encourage that, a good link with the WIB and with HSA in that community to do those services, so that was it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
You also had comments on the item 11, which is the appointment in lieu of election, all of these many, many boards.
Yeah, and that's my comment. I'm sure each of us in our respective districts look at these special districts, the healthcare, all of them, the recreation particularly, to look at people to really step up to run for these, and this is just quite a list, I think, it seems unusual to me that this big a list has been before us before for the fact that people didn't run for these seats, and whether it's something worthy of a further discussion with a VCOG, or just within our own districts to really, and I know we do, but to step up to get people to run, so there's a healthy engagement, both from the community for these areas, but also to get people interested in serving, that's it.
And I really appreciate that, I know that one of these that I looked at, kind of zeroed in on and saw that they were advertising in a different city for the election in this community, right? So you look and see what efforts are being done to an outreach, so people know that they can run for these offices, and sometimes it's just pretty cumbersome to run for office, but I would note, for example, if you want to run in the East County for a position in an East County Water Board or something, you have to come down to the county and get the papers. I thought that might be something that the clerk recorder could do in its East County offices, to let people go and apply to run for elections there, but that's just like one small example, but maybe they could take a look, the clerk recorder's office, the Elections Division, on what they can do to help that outreach, make it a little bit more easier. Think about advertising on, for example, the government channels, you know that there are these positions available, that there might be a lot more that can be done so people know that they can run, they can find out that it's free. I think some people think it's going to cost them money on some of these boards, and it's actually free. So I think learning about what they do and that you can participate in government, there's so many people who say they want to give back, but it's, I think, under that fear of actually running in an election when, did you have some comments too about maybe how we can increase, you know, the accessibility?
It can be daunting.
Yes.
Good morning Chair Parks and Board of Supervisors and Mr. Powers. David Valenzuela from the clerk recorder's office. Yes, we are looking at expanding services, we're running this our historical election this year, but that's something that Mark's going to be looking into, offering these additional services. We have now public inquiry terminals in our Thousand Oaks office, and we have one that we're going to be dedicating for election services probably in 2017, and we have an additional counter, so we have enough room right now, but we are getting very busy. One example was, last week in here in our Ventura office, we had seven marriage ceremonies scheduled, we had 10 out there. So we're getting a lot of Los Angeles County residents coming in because they can get all that all-in-one service in one shot, so, but we are looking at expanding services.
Great, yeah, and I think that one, that you could pull papers in the East County, you don't have to come to the West County, is a good one, and where you could advertise, like we're saying, in government channel TV, explain what the boards are, but it would be nice to see this list paired, I don't know, it's probably about 30 different, for the public, some of the ones, Camarillo Healthcare District, Fillmore Pyru Memorial District, Montalvo Community Service District, Santa Rosa Valley Municipal Advisory Council, Blanchard-Santa Paula Public Library District, Caneo Wreck and Park District, Pleasant Valley Wreck and Park, Rancho Simi Wreck and Park, Ojai Valley Sanitary District, 3, 5, and 7 seats, and Camrosa Water District, Miners Oaks Water District, Cayegus Municipal Water District, Casitas Municipal Water District, Hidden Valley, you just realize, and how important water is, and what those decisions can mean for an area, so there's a lot of seats open there, and I know that a lot of incumbents will just roll over and stay in there, but it's still always, Supervisor Long was saying, good to have that public dialogue and have those discussions.
Will be something on Mr. Lund's radar, I know, next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and with that then, any other items want to be pulled on this agenda item? If not, we'll go ahead and have a motion to approve 11 through 18 on the consent agenda, and we have a motion and a second.
And Madam Chair, there's a revised exhibit 2 for item number 16 placed at your diocese that was submitted this morning as well.
Including those revisions, thank you. And if we could please vote. And now, we have our public comment portion of the agenda, and I have two public comment cards. The first is Amanda Fagan with Naval Base Ventura County, followed by Daniel Chavez Jr.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Powers. My name is Amanda Fagan, and I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. Naval Base Ventura County and Naval Facilities Engineering Command Southwest recently completed an update to our air installations compatible use zone, or ACUS, study. This formal update to the 1992 study, the 2015 ACUS addresses past and anticipated future changes in mission, aircraft, and operational levels from 2015 through 2020. Naval Base Ventura County will host an open house to provide the public with an opportunity to learn about Naval Base Ventura County Point Mugu and the updated ACUS study on Thursday, October 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Camarillo Community Center. It's located at 1605 East Burnley Street in Camarillo in room number 3. For any additional information or questions, the public is welcome to contact our Public Affairs Officer at 805-989-8095. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see some of you there.
Amanda, could you tell us a little bit more about what the flight zone is, that's what it's discussing, right?
Sure, the ACUS study provides an overview of the types of aircraft, the number of operations, and it defines the operational footprint for the installation for the airfield, and defines the noise contours as well as the safety contours, like accident potential zones and imaginary surfaces for the airfield. So it is the first time we've updated the study since 1992, so it's a pretty significant change, we're excited about it.
Thank you, and will the county be getting that study too?
Yes, I've already provided a copy of the update to the Planning Division for inclusion in the general plan update.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final speaker, Daniel Chavez Jr.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, supervisors, members of the audience, and staff. It's a lot of time, I'm not used to this much time, usually at city councils, only three minutes or two minutes, so you've got to move pretty quickly. So first and foremost, I just wanted to introduce myself, my name is Daniel Chavez Jr., born and raised in the city of Oxnard, and one of 11 city council candidates this year. To see on the consent item how many positions for boards were open, it kind of made me think that I should have ran for those, maybe a little bit better chances than what I have right now. I have tremendous pride in the city and Ventura County, you know, I've had an opportunity to move to the San Fernando Valley, where I currently work for LA Metro, which is the second-largest transit agency in our nation. Unfortunately, San Fernando Valley is too crowded, too much traffic, and, you know, not so peaceful as Ventura County is. And the big push in my campaign is trying to improve the quality of life for our residents in the city of Oxnard, ensuring that the future for our children is both safe and healthy. As a father of a 10-month-old daughter, it is very important to me that the city that I raise her in represents all residents in our city. I come before you today as, one, introducing myself, and, two, to speak on a proposal project that is to take place at the commonly-known Fisherman's Wharf. I had an opportunity to view this proposal, the concept drawing, although I support developing, but I also strongly support responsible development. This particular project increases the total of 390 residential being added to our city, even though that this is a county area, but this intersection of Channel Islands and Victoria borderlines three separate agencies, the county, the city of Poronimi, and the city of Oxnard. This particular area, because I live at Hemlock and Ventura, this area, like many other intersections in the city of Oxnard, are heavy congested. We are seeing that there are more housing developments. We are seeing that there are more housing developments going up in the city of Oxnard, but unfortunately, not enough well-paying jobs for our residents. This is an issue because many of our residents that live in South Oxnard are having to work two to three jobs just to make it to the next month. Supervisor Seragosa, you served the city of Oxnard with great passion, and I appreciate your service of 12 years to our city. And Supervisor Long, I am one of your constituents, part of the Third District. And Supervisor Parks and Bennett, as members of the SOAR Initiative, which I strongly support. Unfortunately, Supervisor Foie, you're too far away from me, and, but I encourage...
But I'll give you some good arguments why you want those developments down there.
I encourage the board to please look at this project, reassess it. Look at the Seabridge Plaza Marina. It has a great partnership between both residential and businesses. It allows easy access for our residents, and many people that visit this location don't even live in the city of Oxnard, but are coming from the city of Ventura and other areas. This is an area that is both calming, as, you know, I appreciate what Dr. Hall said earlier in regards to that it's very important to get out into the environment and, you know, explore our natural beauties. So I would just encourage that the board, moving forward, reviews this project and potentially try to redevelop in it in a way that it better partnership between businesses and residential, and that it benefits our residents in both Ventura County, the city of Poronimi, and the city of Oxnard. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez, thank you for your input. The input, you know, is important to all of us, and it's important to, I also love Oxnard, I was raised, lived there all my life, so I want the best for the residents of Oxnard, so, and thank you again for your comments. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And I was remembering too that there is a public member seat open on LAFCO, as I, as I understand, so.
That's absolutely right.
Is that something else?
I just want to share something too, you know, for Armac and El Rio, we advertise that in, in the newspaper and also on Facebook, and you're one of my friends on Facebook too, so, thank you.
We have so many friends on Facebook. And now we'll go to our board comments, and we'll go ahead again and start with Supervisor Seragosa.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to share with you that I had the pleasure the other day of attending the Prop 64, the Marijuana Conference in Oxnard. I want to thank Patrick Sonata, who was here earlier, and also Elaine Crandall and their staff. And it was a pleasure to, to hear the speakers that were there. We had several speakers, and Mr. Mike Powers was there too, and I just want to name the speakers, the Dr. Christian Thurstone, Kevin Wong, who's Intelligence Analyst for the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area out of Colorado, and we have the Honorable Judge James Gray, retired, who was there and spoke, and also James Mosher, who's Alcohol Policy Specialist, and also studied the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, and also Dr. Kilmer from Senior Policy Research from the Rand Corporation, gave us a lot of good information on, on the Prop 64 that's coming up, you know, and the marijuana uses and what's happening in, in different areas like, for example, Washington and Colorado. It was a great, great conference, and I just want to thank Elaine and Patrick. Patrick was really instrumental in, in providing good information for the community. On the Friday, the 30th, I attended the nine, gave nine certificates to the military personnel from Ventura County, and Supervisor Long and I were there, and we had some excellent, excellent awardees, and, and it was just great, a great, the 19th Annual Military Appreciation Dinner, and I want to thank Supervisor Long for being there, for both of us being there. And also on Saturday, I attended the Multicultural Festival in Oxnard. Several thousand people were there, and, and the, the multicultural, it was the 21st anniversary with beautiful kids dancing and having a great time, and we had perfect weather, 72 degrees, right, Mr. Chavez? Really, really great. And also I attended the 20th Annual Labor Leader of the Year Award, and also with my Chief of Staff, Bill Gallagher, and we had a couple of good recipients that really deserved it, and Supervisor Bennett was there also, attending the, that gala. And also yesterday, you know, as, as I was one of the attendees, as most of the supervisors there that attended the services for our fallen firefighter, Ryan Osler, in, in Westlake. And that was pretty, pretty sad. We had a really, really good, I want to thank our chief for, I know it's very, very tough what he did, but it was just a very somber type event. It was just great. Thank you, Chief, for, for the work that you do. And that's all I have. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I would like to mention just about the service yesterday. I really think that you saw the, the fire service traditions at their finest yesterday, when they were needed for healing and needed to link everybody together. And the one that I would just like to call out is, just to show you how unified it is, every Ventura County firefighter was able to attend because all of the other fire districts covered all of the 30-plus fire stations that we have here in Ventura County. So to the chief and to everybody in the fire family, it's now time to move on. I thought your comments were very appropriate, Chief, in terms of making sure that family knows that they have now become precious to everybody in the fire family and stuff. So it was a, a moving day, a moving ceremony, and we sure wish the family well as, as, as they move forward. I was able to attend two events in Ojai, Search and Rescue, had their annual fundraising event, Sheriff Dean was able to be there also, and that's a great organization that saves us a tremendous amount of money because a bunch of volunteers go out and, and deal with things that otherwise, you know, it would be our fire personnel and our, our deputy sheriffs that would be trying to find these people lost in the wilderness, et cetera. And then the Ojai Education Foundation had their annual fundraising breakfast, and it is really inspiring to see young, young people performing, doing things with the extra funding that comes from organizations like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. First, I'll submit the, a list of those to adjourn in memory of from the Third District. And I'd like to also talk a minute about the conference, the symposium on, on marijuana. I thought it was a packed house. It was very worthwhile holding it, and the, a great collection of panelists. And I think one of the things that it's important to, for us to be prepared if adult recreational marijuana use is legalized, that the response must be coordinated with cities for consistency. I, I didn't see a lot of cities there. I think that, that there needs to be a lot more discussion with the cities, that we consider how data is currently collected, how it can be broken down, and what data will we want to study to determine the effects of legalization. And I know our teams are already drilling down on that. And then, as, as we've seen one city move to put a measure on locally on how to, best, best way to tax it, by price, by weight, by THC, a lot of questions. And, and then the, I think one of the key for all of us is how best to avoid advertising to minors, how best can we clearly keep access as best we can from, from minors. So I think to align our guidelines for public health and safety, ensure safe and practical access by residents, reducing the size of the illicit market for cultivation and retail sales, preventing non-medical access and use by youth, these are all things I'm sure our good teams between planning and behavioral health and others and our HCA agency are working on. So the more discussions we can have like this, I expect, depending on the results of the initiative, there'll be lots of opportunity for more discussion. So I appreciate that it was sponsored here locally and had sold-out crowd. I had the opportunity, was invited to say a few words at St. John's 7th Annual Breast Cancer Symposium. This was held last Saturday, they sold out. They sold out in that it was a free for attendance, included a lunch, and, but the room was packed. And they had an excellent group of, of physicians and specialists and doctors, and it was just interesting to me to see the range of women who were there, both ages and across the county, and what a good service that was. And I, obviously, this is the month of reaching out to engage women in understanding what they need to do and should do for taking care of themselves. And so I, I was happy to have been there and said a few words, and certainly spoke to how we have great collaboration with St. John's and, and our system, and it takes all of us, so it was, it was good. Attending the Military Appreciation Dinner, agree with the supervisor, it's always a, just a wonderful way to recognize locally the young military folks who are in our community. And when you hear their stories, and not just what they have in their role in, in the military on site, but what they do out in the community, and how engaged they are, and the many projects they do that are self-initiated, and across the spectrum, all the things that we're aware of, and, you know, the, the nonprofits that they support. So that was, it was, it's always a, a good one, good one to go to, very supportive by the chamber. Congratulations to the Oxnard Chamber for continuing that tradition of sponsoring it. And lastly, I know most of you have seen this, these wonderful ads with someone we all know and love dearly, and his little boys, on the Take Five. See? See? Cute, reading to his, reading to his little ones, and I appreciate our CEO participating in that. It's, as we all support the efforts of First Five and, and getting 35% of children with reading disabilities who drop out of school, rate twice that of their classmates, the importance of reading at a young age to our very youngest, and to, and instill in them the joys of reading and the pleasures and benefits of it, and the, and the happy smiles they have. Looks like Dad's got him in a chokehold.
That's right.
But he is reading to him. And, and the book looks like it's, it's positioned right, so it's not upside down, so, good job. Good job, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I won't tell you how many takes that took.
I'll also say, I found it interesting that this particular one, there are a couple, but this one was in the classified ad section. I'm not sure what that said, but, thank you, Mr. Powers, for supporting First Five work, and that's it. Thank you.
And Supervisor Foie?
Good place to have your picture in the classified ads, I like that. That's great. Now, as of yesterday, as everybody, when they attended the Celebration of Life, it was great to see that Ryan enjoyed his life, and people really loved him and, and respected him, so it's gonna be tough, and, yeah, for him. But, you know, talking about honoring those heroes like that, I was just glad to see that, see me had a little thing with their Elks, you know, just understanding these people, and Captain, you know, Jeff Pike from the Ventura County Fire was honored, and Simi Valley Police Sergeant Lincoln Purcell, and CHP Officer George Roscoe, and our own Deputy Sheriff Adam Gardner, they're, you know, just local community people, just, you know, saying thank you to the local public safety people who put their lives out there on the line for us all the time, and so I think that's, that's especial, because we see what happens sometimes with these people. It's a tough place. But going back to that Prop 64 issue that you had, it's, I didn't have the opportunity to attend that, but I got a lot of comments back on that from a lot of people that were texting me over that, and one of the things I think that you had said, Supervisor, was we didn't have enough city people there, and enough, you know, there maybe hopefully should be one just for those people to understand, because no matter what this is, I saw the poll the other day, it's at 71%, this is gonna pass, and what we're gonna do and how we're gonna deal with it, and all the things that are gonna go along with that, and hopefully you gotta take some time to, to figure this out, because a lot of states are struggling, you know, with these issues, and, and we're not gonna be the first, so there's other things that have happened in other places we can hopefully learn from and try to put the best policies in place to continue to, you know, give freedom to people, law passes, but also protect the other people that are gonna be dealing with this. So hopefully that we could, we could see that where maybe we just bring all the local leaders together, so. No, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And my board comments, I just wanted to point out that I too, with the whole board, was at the funeral yesterday for Engineer Ryan Osler, and also very much appreciated our chief's comments, and it was a great to see the, all the firefighters there from all over, looking at their patches, you know, on their uniforms, and seeing where they've come from, people from Orinda, I mean, they came from all over California to pay their respects, and it was wonderful for the family to see that show of support, so thank you for that. I was also, attended a fall prevention awareness forum that we had in Thousand Oaks, and I, I didn't mention that at our last board meeting. The senior citizens at the Global Senior Center enjoyed so much being, having all this attention, the healthcare agency was there, nurses testing them for their stability and, and helping them with exercises they can do, but what I heard most from the seniors was they loved the dancing. And I don't have the video of Dr. Duncan dancing, I know that there's been requests for that, but out of respect for Dr. Duncan, I'm not showing him zumba dancing, but I, I just have to say the senior citizens loved it. They want the county to provide some cheap dance lessons, you know, they're, they're totally into the dancing, so thank you for that. Also, our, I wanted to mention that this is the week that is ride-share week. October 3rd through 7th is, is Ride Week, and the Ventura County Transportation Commission and the Air Pollution Control District have awards that they can give you, prizes. If you pledge to ride-share during the week, you can win prizes and receive suggestions for customized transportation options. Prizes include an Apple Watch, $200 Visa gift cards, three VCTC gift packs. You can make a pledge by registering with VCTC by going to, visit www.rideweek.org. And for extra chances to win, log your rides during Ride Week on VCTC's commute calendar at www.ridematch.info. And it's a great way to be able to do what we all should be doing, is to limit the amount of vehicles that we're driving and share the ride. I also want to put out a special thanks from a constituent to the Transportation Department. His concern is we, we actually just repaved Las Postas Road, restripped the bike lane with all bike lane money, and his issue was that we didn't sweep it, and so a lot of hazards of two cyclists, particularly those using the bridge on Las Postas Road, so for about a half mile northeast of Highway One and Point Magoo, it did get swept, and he's very appreciative. But we have to remember that too, if we want to encourage cycling, bike lanes do need to be maintained also, and it may take a little bit more work, but sweeping that area too is really important. So thank you very much for the board comments. I also ask that we close in honor of the people on my list, and that concludes my board comments, and we'll go on then to our next agenda item, which is our CEO's comments.
Thank you, Chair Parks. I had the privilege of attending the Flag Ceremony at Station 42 in Moore Park for Fire Engineer Ryan Osler with Chief Lorenzen, and just as he said in his comments yesterday, this was a smaller ceremony, and you could really see the fire family wrapping around his wife and children, and it was really beautiful to see, so. Wanted to mention also that, I think maybe you saw on Sunday, we submitted a joint report out on the Simi Valley Police Shooting Range, and appreciate Kim Prilhart and Brian Miller from Supervisor Foie's office working with us, and I think we ended up in a better place than when we started, and the good, constant, continuous improvement efforts that our planning department is doing is really remarkable. Wanted to also mention that we have Randy Brown here, who's one of our case managers for Behavioral Health, he doesn't know, I was gonna recognize it, I'm sorry, Randy, but I've had the privilege of sitting in meetings with him, where he's working with some of our homeless population and those who suffer from mental illness, and it is just staggering to hear the skill set that he has and other members like him, of those case managers, and I just, I wanted to highlight it for your board, because the knowledge that they have and the resources that they, they try to take advantage of to, to help and support are, are those with mental illness who are homeless, is, is really remarkable. So Randy, sorry to surprise you, but just thank you for all you do, we really appreciate sorry to surprise you, but just thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it. We also had just one last comment, a really nice letter to the editor in the Santa Paula Times about Santa Paula Hospital. "The SP on South Mountain has several interpretations, but to me, it did notice that we should all be so pleased that we have an emergency room and treatment hospital up there that is A+. I recently spent eight days there, recovering from severe breathing problems, and received excellent care and kindness. Even the food was good." And so a big thanks to all the doctors and nurses and aides and so forth, and also appreciation to our beloved Dr. Sam. Thank you.
Thank you. And now then we will go on to our regular agenda item. And the first regular agenda item is 32. And this is with the Healthcare Agency. And we have Ms. Crandall here for the Behavioral Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers, Elaine Crandall with the Behavioral Health Department. This item is related to our current services and MOU with the Ventura County Office of Education. And the recommendations are to authorize the Human Services Director to establish three new positions, to authorize Behavioral Health Director to assign ministerial modifications to the scope of work with the existing MOU, and to authorize the Auditor Controller to process this, process the necessary accounting The Behavioral Health Department began working with the Special Education Local Plan Area, and it's pronounced SLPA, back in 2011. At one time, the Behavioral Health Department was the organization that provided mandated mental health services to children who are on IEPs. In 2011, AB 3632 moved that responsibility from the Behavioral Department, Health Department, into the schools, and AB 114 shifted the funds to the SLPAs. Given our long collaboration with SLPA and early negotiations, a decision was made that the best way to provide services is to make it as seamless as possible, and SLPA entered into an MOU with the department, where basically we go into the multiple schools and provide mental health services for children on IEPs. The way it's funded is, for those children that are on Medi-Cal, we bill Short Dell, the Short Dell Medi-Cal FFP, and anything that's not covered by way of the match, and also by way of other payer sources, are covered by the SLPA agreement. We initially started by being in 50 schools, and we are now over, in over 100 schools, and we are now serving about 923 children. As far as outcomes go, what we are finding is that when we first started, the out-of-county placements, residential placements, were nearly 100, it was between 90 and 100. And today, they're at 17. So the benefits of that are not only that the children are at home and in school, but as far as cost goes, reduces the cost of those expensive residential placements. And, you know, the more successful a person is in their home and their school, you know, again, I will extrapolate, the less likely they are to get in trouble, I mean, just generally speaking, and less likely that these are going to be children that are going to be entering into our adult mental health system. So, you know, the earlier we can catch a child to provide treatment, the better it is all the way around. So because of this growth, our caseloads, you know, have expanded to the point where actually outside of what our agreement is in the MOU for caseload. And so this, the request of the three positions are to accommodate the growth, particularly in the Santa Clara area, Santa Paula region, Ojai, and South Oxnard. Okay, so, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Supervisor Bennett?
I don't have questions unless my comment stimulates a response from you. But when, one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, if you, if you, if you go to the rest of the counties in the state, you'll generally find an enormous amount of tension between the school districts and the behavioral health departments over this particular issue. And when we set this up, we really emphasized that we need to make this collaborative, and that the school districts can't start a war, and we can't start a war. And it seems like that's exactly what's happened, that we have really good collaboration, you've got some great outcomes, decreasing the number of students that are placed outside of the state, you know, dramatically, and now, you know, increasing service to meet because of the increased demand. So I really want to compliment both our, our county staff and also the school districts for finding a way to make it work rather than finding a way to fight, because it's just really easy. When you have two different agencies that have some joint responsibility, usually that means there's just tons of finger pointing and fighting and bureaucratic challenges and stuff. And so my compliments to all those people. And if you see that there's something that we need to do to keep that all on the right track, we'd sure appreciate you letting us know so that we can intervene at our level, try to keep that going. But it's, the final thing I would say, it's just consistent with Ventura County in general, county government has found ways to work collaboratively, whether it's in public safety, whether it's in, you know, this kind of thing, it's across the board. We found that, and it's a compliment to everybody from the top on down. So thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Foy?
You talked about going from 100 placements out of county or whatever to 17. And it's always important, we talk about doing a lot of stuff, and this seems to be a good thing to me. I would think it'd be a great thing. And you talk about saving money. I mean, the taxpayers put the money up for us to do these things and to help these kids and these families. What, if you look at the program overall, what are we doing different that's all of a sudden has made this major change? If you could give us, I know you haven't been around through all that, but...
Right. So I actually was just at the, at one of the schools with Brian on Friday, and met with a woman there who I knew many, many years ago, who was in SLPA, she retired and came back to work. And I think one of the things that this county generally has an advantage of is that we have leadership that have known each other for a long time. So when we talk about the relationships, especially when they're healthy, like they have been with the Superintendent of Schools, and actually, I ran into her again when I was whip director. So we run into each other, and we all, very fortunately, are focused on one thing, and that is services, in this case, services to children. So whatever issues that we have that come up, and they do, we never keep our eyes away from what we're intending to do. We're good business partners, you know, we're good mission partners. We meet regularly, the supervisors that supervise the program meet regularly with the administration of the schools. There's great communication. So if there was ever a definition for what great partnerships are, that certainly is happening between VCOE and the County of Ventura, and in this case, the Behavioral Health Department. There's a lot of communication. The treatment is also collaborated. Each of them talk very carefully through what's happening with the child on their educational, emotional, and home level on a regular basis with, with the school staff, so that adjustments to treatment are very consistent with what they need in school. Staff make themselves available, even though they have, in fact, I just heard this on Friday, even though they have regularly scheduled meetings with each of the children, the fact that they're on campus makes them available to the child. So if they know the children that they work with, so when they see a child walk by that's either theirs or not one of theirs on their caseload, they're able to say, looks like you need, you know, to have a moment. And the school is set up for the children that way. They have quiet rooms, they have, you know, in regular places in the hallway. It's really set up for a child to be successful. And one of the things I particularly enjoyed hearing is, is that children, when they become more stabilized, both in their school and in their, at the emotional level, can matriculate back into, you know, a regular school system. And that's an exciting outcome to see.
So is that what's helped make this change? I mean, when people come in and say, we have 100 out, we did a great job, we got 20% less, now we're at 80. But I mean, you've got 80%, I mean, 80% change, it's a huge amount. So is that where you're seeing why this isn't able to happen?
I do. I think it's that collaboration. I think it's the appropriate caseload size, which is why it's important that we manage that, because the children need, you know, very close attention. And the bigger your caseload sizes, the less likely you are to make yourself that available for each child. Beyond being with the child, there's good documentation as well. So all of that needs to be well balanced for a system to work. And in this case, you know, I will tell you, I walked into a system that was already working. This is the great work of Melanie Roy and Susan Kelly, who just retired. And, you know, every once in a while, I have this expression, it's ours to lose. So my desire is to keep that relationship going. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't. I just saw Mary Samples last week as well. And, you know, there's, you can't say enough about a good partnership.
Well, no, it's great. No, I mean, it's tremendous results, when you talk about that. Besides the money savings, just the idea of those families and their kids, all that kind of stuff, it's some, some good stuff. So, well, good. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manager.
Supervisor.
Elaine, I just want to thank you again, you know, that your staff continues to do this excellent work, and the excellent partnership that you have with the school district is really important. I know Dr. Morales from Oxnard School District is a very good person to work with, and he belongs to First Five now, too, also. And the mental health that we're giving our children is extremely important. So I just commend again your staff and you for an excellent job, and the partnership that you have with our school districts.
Thank you. And we are always grateful to your board for your support. You know, the underneath of our relationships is the board's relationship with the community and with organizations like SLPA and the VCOE. So, you know, we build on that, and we're grateful.
Thank you.
And just my compliments to you. You took on a position from the CEO's office, and on to heading the Director of Behavioral Health Department. Your management skills, director skills, and your analysis ability is just really shines through. You can see that the department is well managed. So thank you.
Thank you. We have a great team.
With that, we have an emotion and a second. If we could please vote. And Supervisor Bennett stepped away, but that's a 4-0, I take it. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 33. And this is with our CEO's office on our Flexible Benefits Program and Health Benefits Rates and Contract Providers for the year 2017. Mr. Atten?
That's, Sean, you're on the wrong side. What happened over here? I couldn't even find you out there. Just not gonna be those guys that sits in the same place every time?
Moving target. Moving target. Well, good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, and CEO Powers. It's my pleasure to be here today. I'm Sean Atten, your Human Resources Director. Before I go into our recommendations, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Steve Geltstad and Nicola Hoover from Keenan Associates. They are the underwriters and managers for the PACE JPA plan that we'll, we'll talk about. So should, should there be very detailed questions? Of course, they're here to answer those. Today, to dive in, I'm here to recommend to you several items. The, first of all, the approval of a two-year contract authorizing the county to become a member of the Public Agency Consortium Enterprise, PACE, Joint Powers Authority, JPA. So if approved, PACE will be the carrier for two new health plan options in 2017. The Anthem Blue Cross Exclusive Provider Organization, and the Anthem Blue Cross High Deductible Preferred Provider Organization, PPO. They'll replace the UHC plans. Also, we recommend that you approve the year 2017 Medical Dental Vision Rates for Active Employees, Non-Medicare Eligible Retirees, and Cobra Participants, retaining the current carriers, VCHCP, MetLife Dental, and Medical Eye Services for the vision, as well as PACE at the Anthem Plans. Finally, we recommend that you authorize the Human Resources Director to sign any necessary Plan Year 2017 agreements and amendments with the above-mentioned carriers. So the current Flexible Benefit Program Plan Year expires in December 31, 2016. For the 2017 Plan Year, staff with the aid of Aon, the county's consultant, performed extensive search for, to identify available health plan options that would be complementary to the existing VCHCP plan. Having reviewed various options, and in collaboration with the Joint Labor Management Committee, County Council, Audit and Controllers' Office, we recommend that the Anthem Health Plan Options replace the UHC options. The JPA that we will join, the PACE JPA, is a self-funded plan with $10.9 million in unrestricted reserves. Those unrestricted reserves are shared with its parent, JPA McSig. For 2017, joining PACE will result in reduction, premium reductions ranging from 0.4% to 37% valued at approximately $2.2 million for the Plan Year. For 2018, we've negotiated a maximum rate cap increase of 12% exclusive of governmental taxes. So regarding VCHCP, the HMO plan, it continues to be by far the strongest and most affordable health plan that, that employees participate in. Over 90% of the participants, employees participating in health plan options are in VCHCP. So this year, it had a, it's, we're recommending an average 15% rate increase. Even with that rate increase, it continues to have a premium rate differential on a bi-weekly basis of at least $100 with the Anthem Plans. So it continues to be very affordable and provides excellent service. Regarding the premium rate structure itself, so we recommend a shift from composite rates to tiered rates. As you know, the composite rates charge the same amount to employees regardless of the number of dependents covered. Tiered rates create a structure, a new structure. There's three tiers, employee only, employee plus one, employee plus two or more. And the charge is based essentially on a number of dependents covered. We recommend a phased transition to a fully actuarial tiered structure. The current year's tiered, tiered rates are hybrid, meaning we've retained some of the subsidy. And this, this smoothing out essentially mitigates the rate fluctuations for employees over a three-to-five-year period. Tearing will align our rate structure, our pricing, with the vast majority of all public and private sector employers. It'll also reduce the rate, the tax impact. For 2020, the Affordable Care Act has a planned excise tax, otherwise known as the Cadillac Tax, that will charge a 40% excise tax over employee-only and family thresholds. The composite rate would substantially increase the amount of tax that the county health plans would be liable for. So in regard to the dental and vision plans, we initiated requests for proposals this year, and we're happy to report to you that we've negotiated, while retaining the incumbent carriers, we've negotiated reduced rates and three-to-four-year fixed guaranteed rates. So the dental RFP produced a 2% rate reduction estimated at $129,000 with a three-year rate guarantee, while the vision RFP produced an 18.9% rate reduction with a four-year rate guarantee. I think that certainty is, is, not only the reduction, but the certainty is a good thing for us. So that covers the medical, dental, vision, health plan options, and the tiering of the rates. There's a lot going on for the 2017 Plan Year that we're recommending. And in recognition of that, we'd like to note that the benefit staff, led by Tracy and Ken, are putting on 11 educational seminars in October. So the first of them are being held today. The, we're there for the employees to guide them through, navigate them through their new health plan options, and to help them make the best selection for them. And with your leadership, we're, and with Mike's, of course, leadership, we're still in a great position to provide reasonably priced health plan benefits for employees and their dependents. Thank you for your support. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Does the board have some comments or questions? Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, just real quick, from the field from Keenan, you gave, you put this rate in cap in here at 12%. So we're expecting a 12% increase next year?
Steve gets it with Keenan, no or not?
Okay, that's, okay. So what am I asking you is, what's, how long's this program been in? I guess it went from the Monterey Health Plan down to this PACE Plan, and did that plan blow up, and then they redid it all again? Is that what happened? And then, or what did you just rename it, or what happened?
Right. So the, the PACE Plan has been going since 2000.
Right. So, the, the PACE plan has been going since 2012.
Okay.
And, and wanted to, to grow more than it had. And so, created an alignment or merger, if you will, with the MixSig program, which has been in place for over 30 years.
Right.
And so, the renewals are planned to be a combination of both.
Yeah.
And so, the renewal history for the last, I think it's six years under MixSig has been about 3.6%.
Okay.
So, the, your point about the guarantee was an interest on the part of Sean and the county to provide some stability in the, at the renewal time. And so...
Yeah. And I understand. I was just trying to get your averages where you're at. And I mean...
Yep.
If it was, you know, if the whole pool was doing really well, you would've given us a 5%. But we understand what this, what this makeup of this group is. And, you know, we were in our death spiral as it was. So...
Right.
I'm just curious if that's what, if that's what you're expecting, or is it, how large is the pool?
The pool is, is growing pretty rapidly. Now, it has about 6, 7,000 employees in it.
And we're adding how many?
We're adding, well, currently, there's about 500 in the UHC plan, but depending on the enrollment...
Sure.
Could change.
Sure. Yeah. And there's no question, I think the Anthem network is going to be great. And all that's going to add a lot of value to what, what we're doing here. So...
And I might say that the renewal was just approved by the MixSig PACE board a couple weeks ago.
Uh-huh.
For 1117, and it's 3%.
Good, good. That's good. So, the plan's running pretty well then, huh?
It is.
That's great. Glad to hear that. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, just, I, I don't know if other board offices have, but I certainly have received calls on this. And I'm happy to hear that there will be 11 meetings out with the employees because I think there are a lot of questions and concerns. One that was brought by one of the calls to my office referenced the chemotherapy cost increases. I expect that that's indicative of the market and the challenges. And pharmacy costs are always the driver that just escalates out of control. And just, just to comment that that's one that I heard. And it was from a, a single mother with children and struggling with the disease. So, the other was for increased costs for genetic testing, that it looks like it's being treated more as a non-medically necessary luxury procedure versus what it can be and should be used for. And I would hope that the physicians have some discretion as to when they may or may not request that testing so that it's, it's, it's used appropriately and the costs are, are absorbed by the system. So, just, just some comments. And I, I know there's a lot that goes into this. And, I mean, more than a year's worth of work, and appreciate that the, 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 the PACE and the JPA, I, I, I think there's been some good due diligence there to really look at how to control future cost. And, and I appreciate that work. So, just some comments. Expect we'll hear from...
Thank you.
We have other folks here to talk, I'm sure.
Madam Chair, you know, I've also received quite a few calls in my office, the concern from going from a composite to a tiered rate. So, I'm glad that the folks are here today to explain that. And my understanding is that the, our county or our plan is probably the only composite, or maybe one of the few, or composite. And everybody's under a tiered rate. Is that correct?
We included an exhibit in the, in the board letter of some of our benchmark public entities. And it basically reflects that every other entity that we're aware of have already gone to tiered rates, either three or four, three being the most common. Composite rates are difficult for insurance carriers and self-insured plans to, to quote because should the composition of the group change based on the initial demographics to the, to the ones that actually enroll, there's some risk associated for them. But also, one of the main drivers, as I mentioned, is this, is this Cadillac tax that's planned to go into effect in 2020.
For the composite?
The composite is the rate that we would have to use when comparing to the, the thresholds provided by the Affordable Care Tax. And the difference between a composite rate and a threshold would produce more of a tax. And eventually, the health plans would, as would most things, pass on those increased costs to the, in premiums to the, to the participants. So, we're trying to have a smooth glide towards 2020 where we go to a tiered structure. It, it accomplishes minimization of the Cadillac tax. But also, it is a paradigm change where people are, employees are now paying based on a number of dependents that they have on, on the plan that are covered and utilizing the services. And it, it does reduce or eliminate that cross-subsidy between people who have employee-only coverage and family coverage.
And I was noticing the, the rates here, the, the difference between the employee, only employee plus one and family, so about $18 or so. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I understood that for this year, the spread was between employee only and the family employee plus two or more is about $30.
$30.
That spread over the three-to-five-year horizon will increase. That's, that's implicitly what we're saying. The smoothing out, going to actuarial tiered rates, true cost is a couple of hundred dollars between employee only and a family.
So, that'll help the employee in the long run?
Yes.
Yep.
And I think that's a big key point I wanted to mention, too, is that this is a very gradual phasing in of the tearing rate structure. And the other fact about the composite rate is really it was hard to get any insurance company to actually bid to provide the insurance with a composite rate, too. So...
I also think that Keenan can tell you that they're, they're the biggest in the government schools and, you know, we're probably the last, if anybody else even has this rate, correct? I mean, as a composite.
I would agree, yes.
Yeah.
It's a hole over from...
It's...
A long time.
I mean, yeah, I don't know how long it's been. We used to do it with unions years and years, even the unions got away from it all. But, yeah, and it, and it's difficult. And the problem is you have so many other people subsidizing so many other people, it is not a, if you want to talk about fair, it's not really a fair system in the way it works. So, I'm glad to see we finally got to that point of making it work for everybody.
And most of the cities are on tiered rates, right?
Yes.
Almost all the cities, I think.
All the cities are on tiered rates.
Tiered rate, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I, I'd just like to offer a perspective that I think, I'm actually think it's a compliment to Ventura County that we're one of the last to go away from the composite rate, only in that our unions said to us, "We want to stay on the composite rate." They knew that it was, but it was, and it was just a commitment by everybody in the union to say, "We want to help out the people with the large families." I'm, I'm not saying that we have to stay, you know, there's good reasons for us now to finally, but, but it's a compliment to Ventura County that we didn't rapidly move away from this and everything else. But this idea, we're all in this together, and we've all got to try to make it work, was, was, it was expressed by the unions asking us to stay on composite rates. And so, my compliments there. The number one issue that my office hears is from people who are frustrated with how we charge them to opt-out. And so, I would like to have a report on that so that we know where we're going towards 2020. What's the game plan on the opt-out? So, people know that, we can, we can talk about that from a policy standpoint. What do other people do? There seems to be a lot of confusion about, well, other places, they have this, that. And I'm hearing it all anecdotally, and it's becoming increasingly difficult for me to respond to people without having sort of, so I'd like to have that report in terms of the policy on, on that side of it. Thank you very much.
That is something that I, too, am concerned with, with looking at the majority, vast majority are all seeing a decrease. The opt-outs are seeing an increase, which you think of as helping to further subsidize those to have lower prices. So, it would be good to have a very transparent understanding of what this formula is. I had suggested perhaps tying it as a percentage of, you know, in, with the rest. But it sounds like it's so complicated that it's hard to understand for employees and how we come up with the figure. And on the surface, it just doesn't seem, you know, it doesn't seem fair in terms of it continually increasing and watching all the others having decreases. So, that is something I would like to look at. And overall, you're saying that we have enough in reserves that will help us through the transition to the tiered at this point? And will there be some cost figures as to, in the future, how that will impact the budget?
Yes. We, we will know very shortly after November 30th exactly, because the demographics of employee versus family, to the extent they changed from 2016 to 2017, will impact any reconciliation between the amount we collect in the hybrid tier rates that we're collecting versus the amounts that we have to pay to the, to PACE JPA. So, we'll know very quickly the big picture of the impact.
Right.
Just one point of clarification, Supervisor, if I may. As I mentioned, 90% of the participating employees are in the VCHCP plan. And about 10% or so are, and will be in the, we anticipate those ratios to approximately stay the same. So, there are, the, the opt-out is a weight, increase is a weighted average between the mix of all those rates. So, while some, some employees are seeing rate decreases, some employees are seeing rate increases, and the opt-out is a weighted average of, of basically the mix.
And that has consistently increased. But if, if we could just see the figures, that, that would be helpful. How do you actually do it? And I, I haven't seen that, so I would like to see that.
Absolutely.
And also, the request from Supervisor Bennett, too, is something that we'd like to see come back. Okay, well, this is a tremendous, a lot of work. And, and it seems like it is going to be overall certainly better for the employees. And their rates will reflect, be better reflective of the services that they're getting to.
Thank you.
You have a speaker, ma'am?
And we have one speaker card, yeah. No more comments from the board? Danny Correio, and he's with the SEIU Local 721.
Good morning. Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, county staff. Danny Correio, I'm the interim Regional Director for SEIU 721 in Tri-counties Region here, representing, as you know, the largest group of employees here, roughly approximately 4,500. You know, I just want to kind of, you helped me with what I, my comments that I wanted to say, one of them being the opt-out. I mean, that's something that our members bring to us all the time, too. And it took me a while to understand the concept of that. And so, I, I, I think I have a better understanding of it now and why it's set up the way it is. But with that goes the affordability and keeping people in the Ventura County Health Plan. As you heard, the majority of county employees are in there. And so, we are in negotiations, as you know. And I'm not up here to negotiate with you right now, but I just want to bring some things for the record for you to think about as we go forward in, in regards to the healthcare. First of all, in your staff report that I read just briefly in the board letter, it, it said that there was no objections from the, the local labor organizations. Well, that's true to some extent. But we do have concerns that, you know, we want to be able to have a more collaborative approach with the county when it comes to designing these plans. And I'm not so sure, I haven't really seen that yet. I'm not saying it hasn't happened. But please keep it in mind as we go forward, we do want to be a true partner. And it's something that we are discussing in negotiations right now of how we can make that happen and how we can be a part of that. So, be mindful of that, please. And some of the proposals for the tier, again, I agree with, with what has been stated, that most of the areas that we represent are a tiered rate. It's not a composite rate. However, for those that are going to stay in the county health plan, a single person is looking at a little over 10% increase. And for families, over 20% increase. That's, that's a big bite. And so, again, we ask that as we continue to negotiate, that you make it more affordable, that you make it so that people aren't leaving the county health plan and that they aren't opting out. I mean, you've got a very good health plan here. I hear both sides of the story. Some really like it, some have challenges with it. I do want to mention that the biggest challenge that I've heard and that we're trying to discuss right now is accessibility of the healthcare. It takes a long time to be able to get to see a doctor. And if you have to see a specialist, even more so. I do want to also bring your attention, because I didn't hear it, that a lot of the co-pays in the county health plan are also going up from a zero co-pay to a county in-network doctor to $20. So, you're looking at the increases that I mentioned, you're looking at a lot of co-pays, including emergency room visit where I've heard a lot of our members have to go because they can't see their doctor. If they don't get admitted, it's going from $75 to $150. So, please be mindful that, you know, although this is a plan that, you know, we don't have a lot of, you know, we're not setting up any kind of obstacles that you vote against it, but there are things that go with it that you must address, including, again, affordability and keeping members in the healthcare plan. Supervisor Foy, on a different subject, I just want to acknowledge, thank you for acknowledging the work that our safety brothers and sisters do and why they deserve to have the pensions that they do, as, as well as all our other public sector workers. Here, pretty soon, all county public employees, public employees will be paying 50% of their share with Peppera. And so, it's something that is much deserved, that they earn, and they're helped paying for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the input, Mr. Correio. Okay, at this time then, I think that's all the comments. No other questions? Then we'll go ahead and have a, a vote on this change in our healthcare plans and rates.
Just a last comment while we're voting there is to, again, thank Sean and Tracy and Ken and Brian Friedman back there and Rosanna for crunching the numbers and all these rates, which is very complex. You know, the savings figures, I think, are kind of conservative, actually, because they're based on this year's rates. We can anticipate that the rates would have gone up for the outside plan significantly. So, I think this is a really remarkable achievement to, to have done what you've done. So, thank you. Great work.
Good work. Thank you for that. So, and now we can go to our 10:00 AM time certens. We're all good with that? And our first 10:00 AM time certain is number 19. And this is a presentation of a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the Ventura County. And for that, we have you to thank and to appreciate, and your wonderful staff. I'll give it to you and physically come down and give it to you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. For the record, Jeff Bergar control for the county of Ventura. It is my pleasure to receive the 32nd year in a row, the GFOA award of certificate of excellence in our reporting, primarily for our CAFR report. And I just wanted you to thank me, and my name's in the board letter, but I wanted to thank staff. And it's not just the staff in my office, but it is the entire county family of fiscal staff, from all the different agencies, as well as my office, boots on the ground, county staff, fiscal staff, the agencies. Start with putting it all together, the many requirements for the accounting. And it all comes into my office, and they put together the CAFR to report out on the financial stability of the county of Ventura. And the complexities that continue to hit our staff, the fiscal staff, Affordable Care Act, realignment AB 109, the numerous reporting requirement changes from GASB 68, 72, all of them coming down the pike. We continue to address those complexities, put them into the CAFR, and knock the CAFR out. And I, it's just a testament to the, the abilities of the staff, of my staff. I'm so proud of, and a lot of them are here right now, they should be back in the office working on the CAFR. But, I mean, I say that tongue-in-cheek. Day in and day out, they can address those complexities, and we still get the CAFR done. And I, and I just want to tell them how much I'm, how proud I am of them, all that they do, and county family, and all the support that you give us. Thank you very much.
This is the certificate, this lovely folder of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And it's presented to the county and for your great work and your wonderful staff. Can everyone stand up and we can, thank you so much for your work. Congratulations. Congratulations to you.
Chair Parks, if I may, just, just to chime in, Jeff said it so well, but the county work is complex. 25 different departments, and they're not making widgets. It's all very complex. But the work that you do is remarkable. The CAFR, I mean, it's not just a good read. That's our, that's our financial integrity. And so, we also see that we get the top bond ratings. A big part of that is the credibility of the work that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, everyone. We know how incredibly complex it is. While I'm up here, I thought I'd just go to our next 10:00 AM time... While I'm up here, I thought I'd just go to our next 10:00 AM time certain. This is item twenty, and it's already up on the screen. And this is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And we have Mike Pettit here, our Chief Information Officer. If you'd like to come up, I will read you this fantastic resolution and present it to you. It reads, "Whereas the Ventura County recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective security and privacy, and whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas the Stop Dot Think Dot Connect campaign has been designated as the National Public Awareness Campaign, implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofit and government organizations, and academic institutions, working together to increase the understanding of cyber threats and empower the American public to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the National Institute of Standards and Technology's cybersecurity framework, and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Critical Infrastructure Cyber Community Voluntary Program has been developed as free resources to help organizations, both large and small, public and private, implement the cybersecurity framework and improve their cyber practices through a practical approach to addressing evolving threats and challenges, which we're hearing about every day. Whereas President Barack Obama signed Executive Order 13691 promoting private sector cybersecurity information sharing to encourage and promote sharing of cybersecurity threat information within the private sector and between private sector and government through development of information sharing and analysis organizations. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, an awareness of computer security essentials that will improve the security of Ventura County information infrastructure economy. And whereas the United States of America's President, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have declared October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and all citizens are encouraged to visit these sites, as well as the Stop Dot Think Dot Connect campaign website, and to learn about cybersecurity. And that website is wwwstopthinkconnect.org. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2016 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and encourages all residents of Ventura County to learn about how they can protect themselves and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses. Do you have anything else you can add to this? So I will proclaim this and hand this over to you.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Thank you, members of the board, CEO Powers. Just real quick, some good news on the cybersecurity front for the year 2015. Phishing, that's emails designed to access your personal information or compromise enterprise information, phishing is actually down by about half, which is good news. That is a tribute to, one, awareness by everybody that uses computers, being aware of these suspicious emails. Phishing is one of the biggest threats that we face, it's also known as business email compromise. And also malware is down by ten percent. But not to be outdone, ransomware is up by thirty-five percent. This is the bad programs that encrypt your data and then request a ransom to unencrypt it. And then also, mobile, smartphone, mobile vulnerabilities have increased by two-hundred-and-fourteen percent. And that's really due to the growth of the portable computing environment with smartphones and tablets. The recent poll was done in April that identified by the year 2020, there will be approximately one smartphone for every individual on the planet. So, pretty amazing that there's that many devices out there, but also a reason that cybersecurity is increasingly important. We live in a digital age, some of our most sensitive information is contained on our smartphones, and so it's up to all of us to just be safe, and if you see something suspicious, don't click on it, ask. And our help desk is always available for that here at the county. We also have cybersecurity awareness information on our county internet page at My VC Web. So thank you very much for declaring October National Cybersecurity Month.
Thank you, and helping to bring that to our attention. Our next agenda item is item twenty-one, and I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Long. This is the presentation of a resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes, thank you Supervisor. As cybersecurity awareness is a new subject matter for recognition, this is not, unfortunately, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Our community partners with us today include Eric Sternad, Interface Children and Family Services, Mike Jump, our VCDAs office, Carolyn from the Coalition for Family Harmony, is Melanie Leesberg here, from our Naval Base Fleet and Family Support Center? Nope, don't see her. Okay. All right. So, thank you. Again, I'm very pleased to present this. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It is something that crosses all sectors of men, women, children, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States, and certainly here in California in our county. According to the National Center for Injury Prevention and Control, a part of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, domestic violence has a significant economic impact on women. Throughout the country, women lose eight million paid workdays each year as a result of intimate partner violence. The Alliance to End Homelessness reports that among families, domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness. So there's a need to increase public awareness and understanding of domestic violence and the needs of victims. And domestic violence embodies incredible strength and resilience for victims to be able to fight back, and deserves our access to culturally appropriate programs and services to increase their safety and improve their life situation. Domestic violence programs in our county provide essential lifesaving services for victims and their children fleeing violence. So it's our advocates and organizations who are doing the heavy lifting in the community to really make a difference on behalf of the victims every day. Domestic violence service providers, law enforcement officials, healthcare providers, court systems, and many others are integrally working together to really take a part in the effort to end domestic violence. So the board is, again, proud to be able to present, bring this forward, and we bring it forward for the public education information side, to, one, thank our partners who are out there doing this great work in our community, and knowing that it does make a difference in the lives of many families and victims and children. And it's important to continue this for urging all of our citizens to participate in scheduled activities and programs that are going to be put on throughout this month, and to work towards raising awareness of domestic violence, improving victim safety, and holding perpetrators accountable for their behavior. So I'll sit down to present this, and please.
Thank you Supervisor Long, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Mike Jump at the District Attorney's Office, and I couldn't agree more with the resolution and the proclamation. I will say that there's a particular emphasis, I think, right now on all of our minds, that kids that are in domestic violence homes are really deserving of more focus by our community. The reality is that there are national statistics that point out that seventy-six percent of children growing up in domestic violence homes end up becoming perpetrators of domestic violence as adults. And one step further, girls who are abused as children are sixty-two percent more likely to be abused as adults. So we have this entire silence, silent generation that is really learning that the way to get what you want is through violence and domination. And you can ask, I'm sure, our local jailers and jailers around the country, that the most common background of the inmates is a background of domestic violence. And so if we really want to move forward from not just a crime prevention standpoint, but all of these societal costs, healthcare costs, mental health costs, all of these things are ramifications of witnessing violence as a kid. So the work that we do now is so important, to intervene, or we can lock them up later. And I just want to acknowledge some folks that are in the room. These are folks who have decided to make it their life's work to intervene. We have members of our victim services, victim advocates, come on, stand up. We have members of the coalition.
[inaudible]
We have some prosecutors in our office, who, Audrey, go ahead and stand up, who work to hold abusers accountable. These are all folks that are on the front line, and it's very, very difficult work, and they do it with compassion, and they do it with that thought in mind of, let's not create another generation, let's get them the help that we can right now. And I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Carolyn or Eric.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Long and the Board of Supervisors for having us here today for this proclamation. My name is Caroline Pritchett-Tel-Sutton, I'm the Executive Director of Coalition for Family Harmony. This year, we learned more than ever how much our services are needed in this county. We offered services in our twenty-four hour shelter to over seventy individuals, over half of those were children, just to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Jump was discussing. We also had almost seventeen hundred bed nights in our shelter, and many of these cases that we are seeing this past year have become increasingly dangerous, involving weapons, drugs, and violence. We are often faced with families who are ashamed of their situation, have nowhere to go, and end up spending time in their cars, living because they're too embarrassed to ask for help. While these domestic violence statistics are still staggering, and the cases involved are still staggering and dangerous, there is a little bit of good news. California Office of Emergency Services has became a little bit more creative in their funding opportunities, and we were recently granted the Transitional Housing Program grant that allows for more creative options for transitional housing. So using the rapid rehousing model, we're able to give victims of domestic violence and their families more options when leaving shelter to have safety and permanency, and that is really great news for domestic violence victims in this county. We also recently partnered with Signal Media and had a domestic violence summit, which we were happy to see representatives from the District Attorney's Office there. So getting the word out to the community that this is a community response, domestic violence happens in all communities, happens regardless of race, color, creed, religion, and this is something that we need to look for. So thank you very much, we are happy to partner with the District Attorney's Office, happy to partner with Interface, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Sternad.
Hi, Chair Parks, board, and Mr. Powers. Thank you again for, along with my colleagues, for recognizing the importance of the public awareness side of domestic violence. Last year, when we met on this day, I talked about the fact that we really needed to open up a community-wide initiative to address community violence, domestic violence. So I'm really pleased to say that we are doing that, along with my partners here. We have had a domestic violence task force meet several times, coordinating Children Family Services, law enforcement partners, district attorney, coalition, other partners. And we have ambitions for really seeing this partnership and this initiative really take, you know, take flight this year. We've, Interface has been able to raise fifty thousand dollars that we'll be putting towards a coordinator for this, for this initiative in the next coming two years, and there are a couple of focus points that we're going to have for this initiative. Number one, I really think there's a lot that we could be doing if we can find a way to share our data across systems. We're, as a system, coordinating together, but in many ways, we're still a bit blind as to where the needs are, what the sequence of events is for victims, how can we do a better job tactically as partners in terms of responding. Secondly, I think we really need to do a lot more around prevention. Fifteen-year-olds tell us, about fourteen percent of them tell us they've already had an abusive relationship, thirty percent of college students tell us that they've had an abusive relationship. So you can see that progression, it doubles in just a couple of years. This is, that's the sweet pot spot for us, fifteen to twenty-five years old. We should have universal prevention for that population. And so this will be one of the, one of the efforts, we're going to be partnering with our education, secondary and post-secondary education partners, to see if we can really spark that kind of prevention work. So this month, we're promoting a Paint It Purple campaign, so this is why I have my fingernails painted purple. So I'd encourage you to be brave, even the guys, be brave, paint your nail purple, people will ask you about it, they're asking me, and this is a way for us this month to say, yes, this really is important, and we need to do something about it. So I'll be back with a bottle of nail polish, if you're willing.
I hit my thumb so often, I don't think anybody will ask.
Well, there you go, that could also do. So again, thank you guys so much for, for the recognition, and really thanks again to our partners.
Madam Chair, as I come up, I'd like to thank Mike, and Eric, and Carolyn, and the whole staff, you know, for the excellent job that you're doing. My question that I have, are you doing this in Spanish also, and in Mistecal also? You're doing that also? I think it's extremely important that we do that. Thank you again for the excellent job.
This is for you, and Mike, and Eric, and Carolyn come up front, and we'll take a picture. And we'll take a picture.
You're losing the back row. You're losing the back row.
Okay, well, come around the side a little bit.
Yeah, put him on the side, there you go.
Wedding planner.
Cruz worked for me, and now she's working for Dan. Stealing the best talent.
Thank you Supervisor Long, thank you all for your good work. Our next item on the agenda then is Agenda Item Twenty-two, and this is a exciting presentation on our Ventura County Building Code ordinances and codes adoption. And our staff report, good morning.
Okay, good morning. Chair Parks, Mr. Powers, members of the board. My name is Dave Hansen, I'm the District Manager with the County Building and Safety Division. The item before you today is the triennial adoption of the Ventura County Building Code, which proposes to adopt certain parts of California, the California Code of Regulations Title Twenty-four, and the model codes, which form the basis for regulation associated with construction of buildings and structures in the state of California. This item seeks to open public hearing on the adoption and proposed amendments to these building codes. Each city and county throughout the state of California is concurrently reviewing and proposing amendments to these codes, and presenting them to their city council and their boards of supervisors. Building and Safety has worked with other jurisdictions locally in the past to coordinate our amendments to remain uniform with other cities within the County of Ventura and within the region. To the most part, we've been pretty successful. Before I move on, there are a couple of modifications that I have to bring forward. These were brought up at the last minute, and these are to the actual ordinance, Exhibit One, and also Exhibit Three, which is the abbreviated summary in Exhibit Three. I'm going to start with Exhibit One. There were a few typographical errors, very few, but there, it's something that we do need to bring up and have corrected before the final version. In Article Two, Section 101.4, it lists sections that are included as 101.4.1 through 101.4.6. This should actually read 101.4.1 through 101.4.7. So it's seven instead of six. In Article Two, Section 116.5, for clarification, this should read in part, shall comply with the requirements of Article One, Chapter Nine, and- the requirements of Article 1, Chapter 9, and Article 10 of this code. The words Article 1 have been added. In Article 4, Section 202, in the definitions, it was brought to my attention that local flood hazard area, the title Flood Plane Manager, there was a space between flood and plane, it is one word, Flood Plane Manager. So, these have been corrected in Exhibit 1, and will be made part of the final version.
Glad there's really detailed people out there seeing that, that's good.
In Exhibit 3, the nine-page document that you just received replaces the existing document Exhibit 3 entitled Abbreviated Summary, Proposed 2016 Ventura County Building Code VCBC, which was previously uploaded into Sire, and you probably all have a copy of that. For clarification, the new document has removed and replaced language carried forward from previous ordinances, or previous ordinance adoptions, that has no direct impact or significant change to the substance of this exhibit. This exhibit does, however, introduce the appropriate changes to the proposed building code. Some of the amendments I would like to bring forward and highlight for the board today, Articles 3 and 4, and those would be the California Residential Code and the California Building Code, they have remained largely unchanged, they're the same as they were for the most part, of the, or similar to the 2013 Ventura County Building Code. One small section that has been added to the Ventura County Building Code is California Building Code, Chapter 31, Section 3108. This has been added and amended into the Ventura County Building Code at the request of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. This section adds increased seismic design requirements for the installation of new telecommunication and broadcast towers and antennas. These facilities will be critical to first responders in the event of an emergency or an incident such as an earthquake, and as I'm sure you are all aware, we are at a heightened alert for earthquakes because of the significant increase of seismic activity on the San Andreas Fault just recently. So it's very important that we be looking at this.
Do you have a description of how the cell towers will look different as a result of the increased seismic safety standards?
Well, the, what it does is it introduces another section of the, of engineering that increases those requirements, and will hope to design them such that they will withstand the seismic activity.
And I know that it's a great recommendation, I know the City of Los Angeles, with Dr. Lucy Jones and all, have implemented that, but I have heard some concerns about what it actually looks like when it's re-engineered to be more safe, and I don't know if it was like four legs all of a sudden, where we usually have one pole, or, but it would be good to, in the future, if you could give us some visuals of what it will look like, the comparison, one width and one seismically fit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Of interest, Chapter 34 of the 2013 California Building Code, which dealt with existing buildings and structures, has been introduced into the 2016 California Building Code as a standalone article, Article 10, and along with that, the adoption of Appendix A, Appendix A, Chapter A1, dealing with seismic strengthening provisions for unreinforced masonry bearing wall buildings. So, the Chapter 34 of the California Building Code is now a standalone article, or its own separate code, called the California Existing Building Code, which we are adopting. As with the last triennial adoption cycle, we propose to continue the provisions of California Title 25 in the Ventura County Building Code, Chapter 40, regarding straw bale construction. To my knowledge, we have had no applicants since the initial adoption of this chapter, Chapter 40. With the increased activity in construction over the past several years, and the movement toward alternative building materials and methods of construction, we would hope to see some that might utilize the opportunity these, this type of building construction presents.
Do you know why it has not been utilized?
I would venture a guess that it's because it's something new and uncharted. There are not that many hay bale structures or houses throughout the United States, much less in the state of California, so it's something new. But I would venture to guess that, again, with the movement toward alternative methods of construction and materials, we should see more of this.
And it isn't really a cost factor, and if the codes are available that allow for it to happen, it might be worthwhile for some to look at it.
Absolutely.
Just quick aside, I'll point out, my brother-in-law built a hay bale house up in Northern California. Great results, really happy with it, but because they didn't have codes, it was just very difficult for him to keep going back and forth and getting permission for this, you know, they had to, you know, appropriately had to say, you know, is it structurally sound, how's it, all that kind of stuff, so it's great that we make it much easier for people to build.
Thank you. And following along with that, we did carry forward the provisions of Chapter 41 in the Ventura County Building Code that deal with limited-density owner-built rural dwellings as an element of the 2016 Ventura County Building Code. These provisions allow for the construction of dwellings on a parcel where it is not served by off-site water or sewer systems. Electric power is not available from any commercial source, and the parcel is located on an area equal to or greater than 100 acres, and is not within the influence of an incorporated city. So these would be areas such as in the outerlying sections of Lockwood Valley, this would be appropriate, and along with hay bale houses. Appendix J, the Public Works Agency Appendix J of the proposed 2016 Building Code, Ventura County Building Code carries forward provisions found in the 2013 Ventura County Building Code. I believe that there may be a few amendments that will be made by Public Works, but that will be in the future. Although there are no significant changes to the 2016 California Plumbing Code, Building and Safety will continue to provide public outreach regarding gray water and rainwater catchment systems. These systems have been in the code and continue. In the last year, Building and Safety conducted a number of workshops and events, one was held at the Casitas Municipal Water District at the Oakview School, one that we have done, I believe, for the past seven years, every year. We have also attended Waterwise and Green Expos in the City of Malibu and the City of Simi Valley, so we're continuing our efforts to be waterwise. That concludes my brief presentation, if you have any more questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Supervisor Long.
Just, you referenced in a few areas outreach to the industry, and I understand there was a letter sent September 19th requesting their review of the VCBC.
I'm sorry, I-
Was there, okay, this is again from some staff review, I had outreach to the industry to let them know of these changes.
This did go out to, letters were sent to members of the Board of Appeals, letters were sent to the BIA, AIA, CIOC, excuse me, a number of the local concerned agencies and businesses around. As you know, our building official retired recently, and we were a little behind the ball on this, and I do want to thank the Clerk of the Board's Office and the County Council for their efforts to help move this along. But these did go out, I have not had any comments, any public comments-
Okay.
-from the Board of Appeals or the agencies.
Thank you.
So, if I can ask, do you and Ray believe that with these changes, a lot of them say administrative, and a lot of, are people going to come back and go, whoa, what did you do to me, or they'll say, no, this is easier, simpler in a lot of ways, or what?
I would, I like to think that less is more when it comes to regulation, and so I believe the fact that we have made very few changes, they are minor, it should be good for the industry.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, and some of my, you know, delete language and going through some of this, some of it's clear, easier to understand kind of things, is what I see?
Yeah, they're for clarification, and some of them, some of the things that were added or deleted, it was, for lack of better words, it was fluff, and so, you know, it has been clarified.
It does, I agree, yeah.
Is that a technical word?
Looking through it, it looked like there were-
Technical term, right?
Ray, you see the same thing in some of this, or?
Ray Gutierrez with the Public Works Agency. We are looking at several things in Appendix J grading, but for the most part, everything's remaining the same status quo. We have not received any complaints from permitees in the area of agricultural grading, so things are going well in terms of the permit issuance. Enforcement, and we're looking at archaeological sensitivity, and we probably will be coming back to the Board with some recommendations there in the future.
Yeah, and I, I think Brian back here, it's probably shaky, said, we haven't heard anybody complaining, and I've asked people, you know, what's happened, so, I mean, it's good, I think there's some clarification, like you said, the fluff's out of it, so it's very clear to understand, those things are really good.
Right.
I think it's helpful, so great, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll use that technical term from now on.
It did look like the only substantive one really was the one on the cell towers, correct? Yes.
And I'll see, I'll see what I can do about getting some-
Thank you.
-before and after pictures.
Yeah, get some visuals, thank you. Okay, with that then, that we have a motion, close the public hearing, and that's to update and adopt.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, for the record, the motion would include a modification read into the record by Mr. Hansen to the changes made in Exhibit 1, and your Board's acceptance of the revised Exhibit 3.
Okay, and with that, if we could all please vote? And that does pass unanimously?
Any one more?
If we have one more vote.
Yours, ma'am.
Oh, like mine?
And I have to read this into the record, ma'am. It's an ordinance of the County of Ventura amending the Ventura County Building Code and adopting by reference the current additions of certain state and model codes as follows: California Building Code 2016 Edition, California Residential Code 2016 Edition, California Green Building Standards Code 2016 Edition, Uniform Housing Code 1997 Edition, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings 1997 Edition, California Electric Code 2016 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2016 Edition, California Mechanical Code 2016 Edition, and Appendix A1 of the California Existing Building Code 2016 Edition, California Energy Code 2016 Edition, together with amendments thereto.
Repeat that one more time.
Yes.
And that does pass unanimously, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Now, on to our 10:30 time certens, a lot of them with our fire department, and we have Chief Lorenzen here. All of them with our fire department.
Good morning Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. Four items in sequence are all the fire districts. Before you today, first of all, Clerk of the Board is distributing the minor changes that occurred to Ordinance 29 that were submitted this morning, so we'll enter those into the record. The first item, Item 23, before you today is adoption of, well, it's actually a public hearing for Ordinance 29, and what we are doing this year, every three years, we get new fire code updates and we update our ordinances. We're actually pulling a few items out of the regular ordinance and putting it into separate ordinances. This deals with fire apparatus access requirements, and what that will allow us to do is leave that ordinance alone and let it be, and only update it as necessary for the future. So that's what Ordinance 29 is today. We are asking you to schedule a public hearing for the second hearing of that ordinance on October 25th, and with that, I will open it to questions.
Are there any questions on this item? Okay, then I'll go ahead and-
Let me just ask real quick.
Yes.
As you go through this and you're doing your update changes, are you looking at that same thing we just talked about, the fluff, in the sense we're trying to make it simpler, easier to understand, and clearer as much as possible?
Absolutely, and part of this is, again, it's that good government and trying not to touch things repeatedly, you know, with the whole concept of lean, and so that's why we're at least pulling these elements out, and also doing some, you know, looking at it with a good common sense approach, too.
Perfect, that's great, appreciate that. You guys-
Okay, and with that, we have a motion in a second, if we could please vote.
And Madam Chair, I have to read this into the record as well.
Thank you.
It's an ordinance of the Ventura County Fire Protection District adopting fire apparatus access requirements to provide for emergency responder and public safety. And once again, the motion would include a revised Exhibit 1. Thank you.
Correct. And now we can vote, and that does pass unanimously? And our next item?
Perfect, thank you, and this one is perfect, dovetails right into the previous board item, and this is actually, again, an update of Ordinance 28, and it is done on a triennial basis where we get new fire code updates, and so this is a proposal to create Fire District Ordinance Number 30. Again, we're just adopting into our local ordinance some normal requirements that we have here, and create an ordinance, all the cities will then in turn go and adopt that ordinance in. What we are asking for you to do today is, again, schedule a public hearing, this is a public hearing also today, but the second hearing for October 25th, introduce and read in title only this into the proposed ordinance, and then publish appropriate notices, and with that, I will entertain any questions.
Great, and again, I'll close the public hearing, and we have a choice of either reading it or reading the entire ordinance, we'll just read the title.
Thank you, ma'am. You want to do it now, or do you want to wait for a motion?
We have a motion on the floor from Supervisor Long, and a second from Supervisor Bennett.
Excellent. An ordinance of the Ventura County Fire Protection District adopting by reference the 2016 California Fire Code, portions of the 2015 International File Code, together with Chapter 9 and Appendix Chapters B, C, N, U, V, and W, with additions, deletions, and amendments thereto, and a repeal Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number 28.
Thank you, and we can vote?
Just to clarify, Chief, you said, so this will be the same code, city, county?
Yes.
That's great.
Great consistency, and now, that passes, we can go to 25, and this is a receive and file on the PulsePoint smartphone application.
This one, yes, this one is actually, if I can say cool, it's a pretty cool one, and it's a very fun one. Hopefully, I don't know if up in the control room up there, they have a video loaded, I know we sent one, if we have it, this would be a great time to play it, perfect. It's about a minute and a half, you'll see exactly what this PulsePoint application is.
Joel, he just suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. He isn't the only one. Today, 1,000 people in the United States will have the same experience. Time is now critical. As a call is placed to emergency dispatch, the clock continues to tick. Emergency responders are several minutes away. Unfortunately, several minutes can be too long. For every minute Joel goes unaided, his chance of survival decreases by 10%. Fortunately, Joel lives in a PulsePoint-connected community. PulsePoint is integrated with his community's emergency dispatch. The moment Joel's emergency call came in, a PulsePoint alert went out, connecting nearby CPR-trained volunteers and AEDs to his location. Meet Scott, an off-duty firefighter outrunning errands, and Donna, a financial planner working next door. Because they were nearby and quickly alerted, they're now able to provide lifesaving care until emergency responders arrive. That initial care made all the difference. This is Joel, he's a sudden cardiac arrest survivor. Armed with PulsePoint, any volunteer can help save a life. Become a lifesaving volunteer, and download PulsePoint today.
This is, like I said, it is amazing what technology- This is, like I said, it's, it is amazing what technology can bring us, and what this is, and I've got it loaded on my phone, it's very easy for everybody to load onto their phones. Basically, what this app does is it notifies the closest CPR-trained, I'm going to call them first responders, it's all of us, and so if somebody was to suffer a cardiac arrest in a public place, and you are within a quarter mile of that, and you have the app on your phone, it will notify you of the arrest, it will also even tell you where the closest AED is, which happens to be right here, and allow somebody who's been trained in CPR to begin CPR immediately. It's just really the power of technology, it's a great way to engage the community, and in addition to that, you are all aware of our, our FireLine page that we have on our website, basically PulsePoint brings that to you on your phone. It has currently, and I have it up, all of our current active calls, and basically every call that we've been on within the last, well, it looks like the last 12 to 24 hours. So again, it's just our ability to engage the community and connect with them again, and I would just like to recognize Supervisor Long for bringing this forward. It was probably about 18, 24 months ago, and it's been a long process, we've been actually working on it, and I give credit to our IT staff that have, are here with us today that have put this into place, and we've partnered with County EMSA to bring this forward to all agencies and all departments. And the beauty of this also, and we were waiting for the, the complete consolidation of our dispatch services, when we went live two weeks ago with Oxnard Fire Department, that was the intent, was to bring this forward and push it out so that every community that is dispatched by the Ventura County Regional Dispatch Center is also now covered with this PulsePoint app. So, it's a great thing, it's really good for the community, and again, it's a great way to engage the community and provide hopefully lifesaving care for the, the folks in our areas. With that?
Chief, I have a question, and so, basically, this happens when the dispatcher determines that it's a heart attack?
Correct.
Then the dispatcher does a different kind of notification to the billers provider?
Yeah, when it's, well, what actually happens is when it's coded through our, our dispatch system appropriately as a cardiac arrest, the app automatically populates and pushes it out. And it also will determine whether or not it's in a public building, it won't send anybody to somebody's private home or residence, you know, our goal is not to have people going into private property, but public place, whether it be the government center, Home Depot, the grocery store, the beach.
And so the dispatcher doesn't have to spend any, as soon as they code it, this thing does all that?
Yes. It is amazing.
And does that give you accidents and everything?
It doesn't, well, it will, it will notify you if you want to look and see where accidents are, yes, but no, if it's just a traffic accident, it won't, it won't alert somebody to respond to the traffic.
But if you were called, if your department was called, then it would do that or not?
So, well, if the traffic, if we get called for a traffic accident, obviously, we respond, and it shows up here on the list of emergencies that are currently, that we're responding to, it doesn't give a specific address, it's only if there's a cardiac arrest.
I was going to say, does that show there, hate to say this, but we just got a text that a little while ago, one of our Simi police was just in an accident, transported to Holy Cross.
It showed it on the PulsePoint app without any details, it gives a general location of Simi Valley for that, it shows all the equipment that responded to it, no details as to the injuries, or the, you know, the officer, whether even an officer was involved.
Yeah, there was, so...
So Chief, the best place to get a heart attack is in a public area, then?
Yes.
In the hospital.
Hospital, even better.
So if you are an individual and you want to have this service, do you have to have it on your phone, or it just going to happen?
It needs to go on a smartphone, it can go on an Android-type phone, or an Apple device, it can go on your iPad, but it's got to be something that you obviously have with you on your home computer, it wouldn't do much good. Well, I'm not a techie, I don't even think it works on a home computer since you can't generally download apps.
So it's for both the, the patient and then also the volunteers?
It's really for our volunteers and for our community, as we teach hands-only CPR, what we'll do is also offer up the app to them, it's a free app, it's very easy just to search it in the App Store under PulsePoint. We'll see if we can work with County ITS and put it on our county App Store, so it's also available for all of our folks that work here in the county, and as we start training and teaching our CERT members, too, again, it will be something we can hopefully push out to them, so it's really a great, great innovation.
Saves lives, huh?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, and my small role in this was really to say, this is, I think this was a, a good direction to go, and a wonderful app, and, and you really brought the consensus together to move ahead with it, and to have the dispatch coordination happen, and then the sidewalk CPR that's been well underway, that is training volunteers out in the community, now be able to offer this, it'll just make us a, a healthy community, safer community, and, well, it's great, exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett, do you have a comment? No? Mr. Powers?
Just a quick question, Chief, so, excuse me, on the AED, so those are all logged into the system?
Yes.
The ones that are on the, throughout the county, the cities?
There's a, well, you're asking me, I know County EMSA has responsibility for actually logging them all, I know the, there is an app in here, the AED portion of the app that actually will show you a map of all of the AEDs in public places, yes.
Great, thank you.
That's, that is good, too. Okay, and so this is just a receive and file, and we have a motion in a second? And thank you Supervisor Long for bringing this forward.
Okay, item 26, again, is a receive and file, and we have, next week, October 9th through 15th is actually Fire Prevention Week. The National Fire Protection Association has endorsed that week as Fire Prevention Week, and our, our thought for this week actually is going to be hitting home on smoke detectors and smoke alarms, encouraging people to replace their smoke detectors every 10 years, they can check the back of their, their smoke detector to see if it's current. It's great now, a lot of the companies that produce these are putting in long-life batteries, too, so we're not having to change them as often, so that's what we really wanted to focus on, and what we're going to focus on during the Fire Prevention Week is encouraging the community to go out and make sure, first of all, that they have smoke detectors, and then check them to make sure they are current and fresh. We are also in our efforts to engage and connect with the community, we're going to be having two open houses during Fire Prevention Week. One will be at Station 54 this, coming up Saturday, from 9:00 AM till noon, and we're actually going to be making pancakes, myself included, flipping, flipping some stacks, and inviting our local communities, hopefully not the entire county, because I don't think we can feed them all, but our local communities to come into that station in Camarillo, and then the following Saturday at Fire Station 41 on Church Street in Simi Valley. Again, open house tours, and again, it's our ability to connect with the community and engage them in some fire safety and fire prevention thoughts and ideas. That concludes the, the presentation for that item.
Yeah, let me just, let me just say, my father, my brother-in-law works for the forestry department, you know, and they're fighting fires all over the place to do that, but one of the things I always ask him, "How is it to come to Ventura County?" First of all, the rest of these guys treat them so well, they eat well, but it's always, it's, someone you're in, he said, "When you come down and you're fighting, it's always a safe place because of all the work you guys do to maintain, you know, safe spaces and do that," because I guess you don't realize where a lot of counties don't do a lot of the things you, you all do here, and it puts people at risk, and it's just great, but it's always good to hear the, the compliments that come about Ventura County on that, so thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, and that receive and file has a motion in a second, and we can vote. We will have a short break right now because our 11:00 AM got continued. Do you want to go into closed session? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Board of Supervisors meeting, our 11:30 AM time certain. This is an item that I've brought to the Board of Supervisors, and what I'm requesting is that we approve directing our Resource Management Agency, our Planning Division, to put in their long-range Planning Sections Work Program, the inclusion of Malibu-Yorba Buena in the pending project list, to have a dark skies ordinance, and then to also consider the JLUSS recommendation, and see, looking at a goal to develop standard conditions to approve protecting night skies around the base from ambient lighting and glare. We have already, as a Board of Supervisors, approved setting a dark skies ordinance for the Ojai unincorporated area, Supervisor Bennett brought that forward, and I want to make sure that, you know, that does stay in the priority list that it is already in, which is certainly above the one that I'm bringing forward, so that would still go forward first, and then I would request that we then do Yorba Buena, Malibu area, it will be able to learn the lessons and use the experience and background that they got from the Ojai one for the Malibu-Yorba Buena area. And then after that, would look at doing the JLUSS recommendation. The JLUSS recommendation also looks to a dark skies ordinance, but specifically their effort is to affect the ambient lighting around the base, and I know we have proponents here, the community of Malibu-Yorba Buena have been very supportive, I've received a lot of emails, and we have a, a resident in the audience who will speak to it. The Naval Base has, as mentioned, been part of that JLUSS study that they initiated, and the cities around the base all participated in and signed off on that recommendation, too. But I know with Naval Base Ventura County, looking at that, their goals, it would be working with the other cities in the area, that's Camarillo and Oxnard area, to work with them and our staff to develop something that would be coordinated for, for all of them. In your packet, we've received a letter, also an email, rather, from the Malibu group in the County of Los Angeles, they've been also working with the City of Malibu, as well as the county has put together a dark skies ordinance, so this would complement that area in the Santa Monica Mountains to have that. It's interesting, their group in Malibu have, are suggesting we go with a model lighting ordinance that has been put together by the Institute of, I think, the Illuminating Engineering Society, they created a model lighting ordinance and suggest we look at that, but they do say they're 100% in support of enacting a, a local lighting ordinance, and again, the recommendation I have is to ensure that we don't displace the order of things, and that Ojai still goes first, then Yorba Buena, and, and then the base, with that experience, each one gathering more experience, I think, as we move forward. The effort to do these are certainly to benefit both human health and ecological health. You know, it was interesting, this morning, we had a presentation from the Western Foundation on vertebrate zoology, talking about the 50% loss in birds that we've seen in songbirds, and interesting, one of those things is because of ambient light glare, it is affecting migrations of birds, so it, there are ecological benefits and also conservation energy benefits, too, as we'll hear. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have, and then have our public speak, so if there are any questions on this, it has been reviewed by the Planning Division, and they, they are fine with it as written, and so with that, I'll go ahead and call our comment cards. We have Van Royce Vibber, and he's with, actually, does it matter which order? You don't, okay, so Van, if you'd like to come up to the podium, and then following, Mr. Vibber will be Amanda Fagan with the base.
Hi, I'm Van Vibber, I live in Malibu on Houston Road. I just want to thank the board for considering this agenda item, I'm glad you're doing it in Ojai, it's wise to do the Ojai first, as build on that, so we learn is what we're doing. It's, I would also note that everything we're trying to do in, in this ordinance is, it's consistent, complimentary, works together with the County of LA, and I know the, the City of Malibu has a similar item that they're working on, but it is not in effect yet. And it's very much appreciated by the residents in Yorba Buena and Malibu. I think that's all I have, any questions?
I'm not seeing any, thank you.
Okay.
And Ms. Fagan with the, the base?
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, and Mr. Powers. Again, my name is Amanda Fagan, and I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. I would like to introduce to you Commander Joseph Pope, our Public Works Director, and Commander Kyle Behan, our Operations Officer, and they'll be available to answer any questions that you might have relative to the dark skies ordinance in Naval Base Ventura County. As was noted in the Joint Land Use Study, excess ambient light can impact night training and testing operations. Some examples of activities that may be impacted by excess ambient light include training with night vision goggles for approach to the airfield, as is done by the Channel Islands Air National Guard C-130J pilots, or also our training activities that simulate landing on an aircraft carrier during field carrier landing practice for E2 Hawkeye pilots. Preserving the dark night sky also preserves flexibility that we have for current and future testing operations as well, that may be also impacted by excess ambient light. The September 2015 Joint Land Use Study identified the lack of city and county dark sky lighting standards as a compatibility issue, and recommends establishment of a dark skies ordinance to address the issue. The Joint Land Use Study also includes a brief overview of design features that may help to prevent significant increases in ambient light and glare. Several military communities around the country have similar programs, for example, Kern County and the Naval Air Weapons Station China Lake, which is sort of a sister installation to Naval Base Ventura County, as well as Camp Bullis in the Texas, Comal County, Texas. They also have a very developed dark skies program as well. We concur with Supervisor Parks's recommendation to lead with the Yorba Buena ordinance development in that we will also benefit from, from that, given that, that area of Santa Monica Mountains and Yorba Buena are sort of our neighbors to the southeast. And dark skies for MBBC Point Mugu may also be incorporated into a broader effort to implement the recommendations of the Joint Land Use Study. So again, I thank you for your consideration of this item, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Long?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for coming in to speak to this, and, and certainly, as we work through the JLUSS, that was an important component, and I did get the information regarding Kern County and, and Texas, and I think that then, to me, says, raises a question of, wouldn't we be better off to do a county-wide effort here? Now, I understand that's time and, and resources and money, but that's just for, I, I would like to have some discussion about being flexible on how the, the planning staff may move forward in dark sky ordinances, and the question I have, too, Ms. Fagan, is the, as was done with the JLUSS, the Office of Economic Adjustment has funded location studies for dark skies ordinances following the JLUSS recommendations. Do you think that is likely that we could, we, or whatever the process would be, to go after some funding to be able to advance this sooner?
As you know, I previously worked for the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment, I certainly don't speak for them anymore, but I am aware of several communities that integrated efforts to develop dark skies ordinances into their JLUSS implementation efforts, the San Antonio area being one of them, where OEA funded a lighting study that was part of the development of a model ordinance that was then adopted by the surrounding jurisdictions. So I think that is an... So I think that is an item that OEA would consider for funding.
And whether it's parallel or in conjunction, that's just my concern. And when we, you talk to, for planning staff to say you want a priority of XYZ, that can be very constraining when there might be an opportunity for funding.
Yeah, and I would leave that to the planning staff. However, when you look at Malibu, Yerba Buena, and the naval base, you go through the Coastal Commission to put, and they're looking at doing overlays. So I think you really want to be able to tailor it to the area, and some areas just may not work. And I'll let Supervisor Bennett speak, too, regarding the prioritization of things. But I think leaving it for them to be able to, if they want to do, expand beyond, but to let them know this is our priorities as a board.
Excuse me. I think you raise a good point, if there are opportunities to roll it all together. However, just in our conversations with staff, they were pointing out that the non-coastal zone is going to be a whole lot easier to get and go a whole lot faster than the coastal zone. So if that continues to be the case, then there probably is some benefit. But I think we, I'm very comfortable saying, if there's some grant opportunity or something out there, bottom line is, we just want to try to get this done as soon as we can. If there's some way to, by packaging them all together, we come up with the resources that allow us to move this quickly, we could, we could package county staff resources with a grant, and maybe the grant is focused only on the base and therefore the coastal zone. That could take care of the coastal zone, and at the same time, staff, you know, could put those two together. We still may be able to do one sooner, but we may be able to link together the resources. I'd be perfectly fine if that message goes out. If there's any way that we can get all of them to go fast, faster, that's great. But you don't want to slow anything down while you try to, because the Coastal Commission's just a challenge.
Right. And we are, we will be taking, we are doing some LCPs right now with the ESHs and all with the coastal. So if that could be folded in, that would be a more expedient way.
Madam Chair, you know, mandating though, the city of Oxnard was part of the JLU's also, so we can probably take this over to the Oxnard City Council and recommend, because we're so close to Magu, you know, and the base, you know, that would really work out, you know.
And I know Ms. Pilhard isn't here, but she was, part of the recommendation was to work with the nearby cities to put together. And that's something also that the JLU's study is saying. It's not just the county unincorporated area, it's obviously also the cities adjacent to it. And that's something that you want to get a coordinated approach if you can get.
And I think it's important that we support our bases, you know, whether there's an encroachment issue or the lighting issues and so forth. I think it's important that we do support, you know, I support it, and I'm sure that Oxnard will support it, too.
Okay.
Not speaking for Oxnard, but I'm sure that they were part of that JLU's.
And Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, no, I too, we need to support the base. I'm just curious, out of some of these places, it's happened around the country in different places, we just talked about some bases. Are we learning if there's any negative effects on certain things that we need to do to put into this to make sure that we don't cause any more problems? I don't know if the two gentlemen have seen any of this at some of their locations or not.
From my experience, I was previously stationed in Hawaii, and we didn't have any light ordinances like this in place. And I know from an environmental perspective, we had a lot of issues with seabirds dying because of light pollution. So my personal experience is I only see net benefit. I'm also under, as Public Works Director of the Environmental Division is under me. So, you know, Point Magu being the largest saltwater estuary in Southern California, I, my professional opinion is that this is only a net benefit to the base. And then from an operational perspective, as Ms. Fagan said, you know, the air operations only benefit from this initiative.
Great, good. And that's the thing, if we're going to do it, just do it right, and if you're burning those, that's great. I'll support that, that's great.
Good suggestion, Supervisor Long. Thank you very much for coming, everyone, to speak on this item. I would ask, though, that we do go ahead and approve the recommendation as listed and also include the potential for working with grant funds to move the coastal zone one, if that's how it works best. Thank you. Thank you for bringing the request to us. Our next item on the agenda, our next 11:30 time certain, is with our District Attorney and ratification on some grant funds, correct?
Good morning again, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I have some good news. I am Mike Jump with the District Attorney's Office. I'm Chief Deputy overseeing our Victim Services Safe Harbor Program and involved in developing Family Justice Center of Ventura County. And I'm here before you with what looks like a very long list of action items for you. It all involves the first step of asking your board to ratify our application for something called the County Victim Services Grant Application, in the amount of $793,763 that we submitted to Cal OES. And secondly, I would ask that your board adopt a resolution to allow us to accept that grant award. Thirdly, ask your board to approve the establishment of a fixed-term victim advocate three and an administrative assistant one for our office. And those positions will provide oversight of the grant and establish a crime victim advocate position dedicated to providing services for migrant farmworker victims of crime within our office. Also, ask your board to approve a contract with Interface for $184,000 over two years to provide human trafficking victims with their appropriate victim services. Also, ask your board to approve a contract with the Coalition for $184,000 over two years to provide LGBTQ crime victims with services. And then lastly, ask your board to approve a contract with court-appointed special advocates for $88,000 over two years to provide human trafficking prevention and outreach services to foster care youth. I know that was a mouthful, but we really tried to cover a lot of ground with this grant.
Madam Chair, Mike, you know, I, this is great. I think, you know, that specialized services for farmworkers, human trafficking, and the LGBTQ victims is really important to all of us. The question that I have is, you know, we, you have the farmworkers, can they also, can you provide services for wage theft and sex crimes and et cetera, et cetera, for farmworkers? And we, you know, you're going to have that position, and I think it's going to be a bilingual position that you're going to have.
Absolutely, it's going to be a bilingual position, Supervisor. I guess it really depends on what you mean by wage theft.
Well, we've had testimony in the past where an employee was not paid on time, or an employee was paid cash, and employees were not paid the proper amount and so forth. And that's the kind of information that maybe potentially we can send to your office, and maybe then you can help us to find out who or what agency, either state or federal agency, can be shared with, you know.
Well, I think many of the circumstances you just described really fall under kind of the regulatory scheme. I was present at a workshop that you and Supervisor Bennett held a few months ago, in which there were roughly a dozen or so regulatory agencies represented. And those are really the agencies with the jurisdiction to handle things like you just described. However, if you mean wage theft as in, give me your money and you just got paid, the sort of blood and guts crimes.
That's a big one, right?
Those are certainly the crimes that our office traditionally handles and is absolutely going to handle. But I will say that the victim advocate that is going to be a part of this grant is going to be a resource on all fronts. So if we have a migrant farmworker, a crime victim, and while we may not handle the prosecution personally, that position is going to be certainly willing and able to try to point them in the right direction in terms of which regulatory agencies to contact.
You can be the broker for that.
Certainly try to be. In addition to the helping a migrant crime, migrant farmworker crime victim get things like restitution, restraining order assistance, apply for victims of crime compensation, those are the kinds of traditional roles that that advocate is going to provide in addition to trying to point them in the proper direction with regulatory agencies.
Fantastic, so we can work with your office on that.
Certainly.
The other thing, too, is the human trafficking, that's extremely important to me, because it's happening, as we've seen year after year, you know, that happens. I think San Diego and LA and San Francisco are the highest trafficking cities there is, you know, and that's extremely important. And it's happening here, too.
Absolutely is. And in fact, I brought some of the other partners to the hearing today. Interface, Eric Sternad is here, his office, and Casa Theresa Romney is here as well. And both of their agencies as partners are going to work on the prevention piece of human trafficking, working with foster youth, and also coordinating the services that already exist in our county to try to help human trafficking victims.
And I know Carolyn was here, too, and Erika's here this morning, too, on Crime Prevention Month, you know, but thank you then. We can probably work with you then. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just, I really appreciate that you're trying to stretch to do a lot with this grant, and I hope that it's not stretched so far that you can't do anything, you know, because you're trying to do so much. But, but I really appreciate the effort. One, and two, creating an environment where it feels very accepting in the DA's office for a migrant worker to be able to come in and feel like they've got an advocate there, that's a huge step. And I just want to compliment the District Attorney and his office and you for bringing this, this cultural, additional cultural advantage to people in your office. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that, Supervisor. District Attorney Greg Todd has really set the vision for how inclusive this program wound up being. So much of the credit goes to him in terms of saying, let's try to be as expansive as possible. We have a number of vulnerable populations that we need to serve, and let's not be selfish with that, so.
And he's very supportive, thank you.
Madam Chair, I had a concern whether it was duplicating and not enough coordination with our Human Services Agency and others, but I've spoken with them and they're on board and continue to, as the grant rolls out and the work is underway, that that is across-platform, all that communication. And so we, we benefit from enhanced services, not, certainly not duplicating, so.
Absolutely, couldn't agree more.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor from Supervisor Aragosa and a second from Supervisor Long. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. We can go to our 11:30 time certain now. This is adoption of a resolution authorizing a joint exercise of powers, and this is in relationship to the Santa Rosa Valley Basin Groundwater Agency.
Good afternoon, Chair Parks, board members. Mr. Powers, for the record, my name's Jeff Pratt, I'm with the Public Works Agency, and I'll be presenting this item. I am joined by the Camarosa General Manager, Tony Stafford, if you have any questions, and Public Works Director from the City of Canada, Maria, Dave Kotsel, and other staff members as well. Little background, 2014, so a piece of legislation called the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was passed. It changed the game, the way groundwater was going to be approached from a management perspective in this state. One of the requirements that came out of Sigma, I'll call it, was that there would be, for all basins determined by DWR to be a higher-medium priority basin, there would be a GSA required to be formed by June of 2017. Sigma also was historic in that it took a traditional veer from the special utility districts to local governments, giving local governments a chance to participate. And December 2014, your board indicated to staff that in no uncertain terms, the resource, groundwater resource in the county was very important inasmuch as more than 70% of the water in Ventura County, used in Ventura County comes from groundwater resources countywide, and directed participation in all of the GSAs that were the high and medium priority basin GSAs that were going to be formed. In the county of Ventura, there were 12 of those basins, four of them were, four parts of four are in the GMA, which is already a basin. So that gets us down to eight. Two of the basins, one were, is, one's adjudicated, Santa Pola, gets us down to seven. And the Ojai basin also has its own groundwater management agency, so it took us down to six. So you're going to see five GSA agreements over time. Today's the first one. The reason it's five and not six is that the Santa Pola Basin and Fillmore Basin have combined into one. So, and those will be coming to you later this year. Today is the first one, and arguably the easiest one. It's the Arroyo Santa Rosa Basin. The participants in this JPA include the city, Camarosa, and the county. The JPA is attached to your board letter, and it goes through the details, but probably the most important is representation. The way it's structured in this particular case is that there are seven votes on this particular GSA. Five of them belong to the Camarosa Board, one for each board member. One belongs to the county, one belongs to the city. It's also something worth noting that if the city should decide some future point not to participate, that vote would go to the county. Your board direction has been to try to negotiate equal footing to protect the resource, the groundwater resource in each of these GSAs. And we think that this JPA does that because Camarosa, even though the voting would seem disproportionate, and that's because Camarosa is sort of a unique situation. The first thing that makes them unique is that the basin, not inside the GMA, that portion that's not inside, is entirely within their service area. So the responsibilities that the GSA allows, that Sigma allows GSAs, are already there for them with a few minor exceptions. The Sigma allows GSAs to do something that water districts can't do without the GSA authority, and that is allocations, allocating water, hiring staff, that sort of thing to run these things. But we feel that there is a balance of interests with this one, given the number, Camarosa's boundaries, their level of sophistication, as indicated in a conversation we had with you about water availability letters and their long history managing the basin. And then our other authorities in the basin. We have the well ordinance, we have the, I always get this one, the septic tank ordinance. We also have land use authority, and of course, your board is very able to air out any differences of opinion in a very public forum. Also, there will be a coordination agreement required between Camarosa and the GMA, which should balance things, which will talk to safe yield. And they cannot move forward to the GSA unless they have an agreement with the GMA. So there is that balancing act going on as well. And then finally, as a last resort, should things fall apart and there just be complete disagreement between, say, us and Camarosa, there's a submittal required for the GSP to the Department of Water Resources in an open comment period. And it's not likely in this particular situation that if we had significant differences, they wouldn't be science-based and DWR wouldn't listen. So that concludes my, I recommend that you adopt this, and I also recommend that you appoint the staff members or board members you want to be sitting at this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This was the first time I've seen it when it came in our packet. And I like the way you started saying this is the easiest one, because, was it about two years ago, it was the hardest one, right?
They were out, so Camarosa was very aggressive in pursuing the GSA authority, and right out of the box said, we're going for it. So we had 90 days to make a decision, your board had 90 days to make a decision whether to participate. No one else has done that in the entire county. So in that sense, they were a challenge.
There's two resolutions, correct? And one of them is the formation of the JPA. The other one is the assignment of a director, appointment of a director.
And an alternate director, yes.
And looking at the one that's the resolution for the director, it's the second, whereas says the JPA agreement requires the governing board of each member agency to appoint a director to the board. My understanding, though, it is five. director to the board. My understanding, though, it is five members of the Camarosa District, not a member of that.
That's correct.
So, is that an accurate statement in the resolution, the second paragraph that states the JPA agreement requires the governing board of each member agency to appoint a director to the Santa Rosa Groundwater Agency Board of Directors, as well as an alternate director? It seems like that is inaccurate. Am I correct, though, it is five members of the Camarosa, one member of the city of Camarillo, one member of the county?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would just, maybe that's a legal question.
This has been reviewed by County Council.
And while.
I would agree that that's a misstatement in the resolution.
Okay.
That applies just to the county.
And then, having worked with, well, here's some more questions. Who's the administrator?
As in?
Of the JPA.
That would be Cam, if I understand your term.
Is it stated in the agreement who the administrator is? Now, the reason why I ask is, I come with experience when Triomfo Sanitation District and the Los Verdes Municipal Water District came together and formed a JPA. That became a big issue, expenses, all that stuff had to be broken down. They ended up in a lawsuit together, managed to get that settled without going to court, but they had already started. So, it just seems like there's, that was always a point of contention.
The JPA gives Camarosa the right to appoint an executive director that would report to the board. I assume that's who you mean by administrator.
Okay, and so they will oversee the, any of the physical.
That's their expense.
Any of the facilities, the administrative costs, they will be the administrator of all that.
And while I can't speak for them, I assume that that person would be consistent with the general manager.
Well, it's just, it's which agency. So, the, also on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy I serve on, we have JPAs, for example, that started the MRCA, and Joe Edmondson, the executive director, is the king of JPAs, I must say. I think he's invented them, but we have probably close to a dozen. But the understanding is, is that when you do a JPA, it takes the authorities of each or the jurisdictions of each, and so where Camarosa only has the jurisdiction for Camarosa District, the county has its jurisdiction. When you bring them together, you have all these, all of the jurisdictions. And so, my question is, we will have a board that will be, certainly will be the minority of five members of Camarosa sit on there, one of the city, one of the, but they will have the authority to not only make decisions for the Camarosa District now, but for the entire county, because they're bringing ours in. So, that's a question that I just have in terms of, is there some safeguards that the application of the JPA is only for the Santa Rosa Basin and not for Fox Canyon area, other areas outside of the Santa Rosa Basin?
Well, the whole statutory framework is that this governing bodies will be set up just for the basins and governing over the boundary, within the boundaries of the basin. So, the extent that they don't have any powers outside the boundaries of the groundwater basin.
Okay, so that's stipulated in here. I think that provides me confidence then.
I think that's just the statutory scheme, and so combined, I'm not sure that it's stated in the JPA itself, but that is the statutory framework, and I think the state still has to approve this and register it, certify, whatever the state does, and then it becomes the officially recognized governing body for this groundwater basin to create the plan ultimately.
So, but you're not sure whether the actual JPA restricts the jurisdiction to the Santa Rosa Basin?
In the, I know that in the language, it excludes that portion west of the Bailey Fault, which is under this jurisdiction of the GMA.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The JPA excludes that portion of the Arroyo Santa Rosa Basin west of the Bailey Fault. That portion is in the GMA and already spoken for by the GMA, the Fox Canyon GMA.
There's a definition in the joint powers agreement that defines the basin. The basin's defined as excluding Fox Canyon. So, I mean, it's a combination, the statute obviously prevails, and the statute's only allowing for these governing bodies over these mapped basins. The JPA defines the basin, and so I think it's consistent, the statute and the JPA.
Perhaps what we could do then is attach the map of the basin to the agreement and make sure that it does state that it is the jurisdiction of the JPA. We do have a map.
The map is included.
It's figure one. I don't have it with me, but it's figure one.
I know it is, I do know it's a figure, but I don't know if it's a figure that is a appended to the JPA agreement, and that's all I'm suggesting that we do, if there's no objection. And then, we also need to correct that one wording on the resolution. We can do that today?
Yes, we can do that on the resolution, just correct that whereas clause to say it applies to the county, not all members.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I know that the Santa Rosa Valley community has great confidence in Camarosa and is very supportive, and that's why I will support this. We were asking for a seat at the table, we got a seat at the table, and so the county will have some voice in that and be able to have some say, and the Santa Rosa Valley community will be delighted to know that Camarosa will have five of those seats. So, and I'm glad that the City of Camarillo also wants to participate too.
Is it possible to hear from Camarosa real quick?
Did you want to speak, Mr. Stafford? No, you're good.
You're good with everything?
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion if there's no other questions or concerns.
I would just like to comment on fine with the motion, but I would like to comment something that I think is important. This, as Mr. Pratt pointed out, this is a unique agreement. It started quick, Camarosa started quick. They are already over the whole basin, their service area and stuff. There's a number of reasons why it's unique. This is not the way, this is not consistent with what we're saying. This is not the way that I think these future ones need to be set up. I just want to make sure that we're on record as saying, hey, you know, this would not be, this would not be the formulation that makes sense in the other districts. So, I just don't want anybody to look, I don't want the other places looking at this that's going, hey, this is a precedent in terms of what we're going to do.
I would agree with that concern, because I think this is unique, and all the others will say they're unique too, but there are, clearly will be differences, and the board has and should take the role of evaluating each one as it stands on its own merits, and our role is to make sure that we are, have the ability to oversee the unincorporated areas and the population that's therein, and as we heard, there's going to be, in the Santa Clara Valley, the Fillmore, Santa Paula joining, so it may have a different structure. So, we have to be able to be aware that we may ask for other conditions.
Not yet. I might point out that when the state first came up with the idea of the groundwater basins, the state was thinking of simply giving the authority to the agencies that represent the general public, not the special districts that are actually pumping. And then they changed that in the course of the negotiations, and that's fine to add to stakeholders. But we do have to have the county be able to appropriately be able to balance the interest of the general population, because you're definitely always going to have strong representation from the people who are doing the pumping.
Right.
And whatever agencies are doing that, and you have to have that general population to be able to counter that. So, thank you very much, but I'll be happy to, if it's not seconded at all.
You brought up another question in my mind. The City of Thousand Oaks, is there a reason why they weren't invited? I think, for example, they own land in the Santa Rosa Valley. Their water from their wastewater treatment plant is integral to this.
I wasn't there during the negotiations, maybe Tony can speak to that. Come on, Dave.
Yes, Tony Stafford with Camarosa Water District. Yeah, we did talk to Public Works Director about that, and they didn't have an interest in Santa Rosa Basin, but if Tiara Hata came up, they would have, so.
They didn't have interest in being?
Being a part of the JPA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for checking on that, I appreciate that. Okay, so then I'll go ahead and.
If you have any questions, please, the appointment as the director.
And does staff have a recommendation?
We don't, as this is the first one, we haven't been through that with your board. It can be a board member, it can be a staff member. I would suggest that early on, maybe staff member, can you change later?
And are the others all electeds?
They are.
The city also is doing an elected?
I don't, are you sending, I'll let Dave Klotzel, the Public Works Director, answer that. Do you know who you're sending?
We don't, they have a jury yet.
I think, given how complicated groundwater is and the setting up of these groundwater management plans, to try to get elected, I mean, they're elected, but they're elected water guys, you know, to try to get a supervisor up to speed and to be able to, you know, negotiate. I think we're much better off appointing staff members, and so what I would suggest is that we, whoever is our, whoever is our water person.
Yeah, why don't you just have it as the director, he's our, his designee kind of a thing, and he directs the right water person or something like that.
Can we do that, County Council?
I need to look at the joint powers agreement here real quick, to see if you can appoint it by office instead of by name.
But Jeff, would you agree with what Stevens has said?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's very specialized.
Yeah, and it is, it is complicated work, and I do think staff is the most qualified for that. But when it comes to the leadership, you know, sometimes staff takes, is normally in a lesser role.
Can we do this if, just, here's what I would really like to, I mean, if we appoint somebody and then that person, you know, he's not with us, and you got to, I would like to put this in the hands of the Public Works Director to identify who our representative is and who our alternate is, if the joint powers agreement allows us to do this. Could we trail this until 1:30 just for that part, or can I give you time to check that out?
Well, we can trail it. I found the provision, I can tell you, but all it says is, "One director shall be appointed by the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors." That's all it says. And then, and then there's another clause saying the county may appoint an alternate director. So, that's not much guidance, but I mean, I think it's fair to interpret that as you can appoint an office holder. So, if you want to appoint the director of the Public Works Director, for example.
Do you think that's good?
Or the designee.
Right.
Or, or, but he also, he can appoint an assistant director, what do you think?
Well, I don't know, I think, I mean, to me, the board needs to appoint someone either by office or by name, because a designee could change weekly without any notice.
What was the title of Tully?
Director Watershed Protection District.
That's who, that's who we should appoint, the director of Watershed Protection.
Just a word of caution, there would be a load leveling issue. For the moment, I guess my recommendation would be to point the Public Works Director as the member and the Watershed Protection District Director as the alternate, and if we, so we can get the load leveling down with the other GSAs as well.
And I would think the Public Works Director and appoint the Public Works Director's designee as the alternate.
I don't think County Council's got much to do there.
Yeah, I'm reluctant to go out and just authorize a designee, but.
You want to put the position, Watershed Protection District Director as the alternate?
Correct.
Okay.
You didn't do anything to do, did you?
No, I'm in executive management. So, the, that was supposed to be funny. So, the, originally envisioned it was Watershed Protection District Director, but I mean, I have one for a while, and the negotiation of these has shown that it's quite a bit of work, so if we could just start there, we'll come back to your board if we need to change.
Yeah, come back with what you need.
Okay, so on the resolution regarding appointing the director, it'll be the Public Works Director as the director, and the alternate would be the Watershed Protection District Director. And in addition to that, we will do the clarifying language to point out this is specific to the county, has one director in that language of the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
And the, additionally, the other resolution will include the, appending the jurisdiction map of Santa Rosa Basin to it, and referring to it as that is the map of the jurisdiction of the JPA.
I've got one, I've got one concern. We don't have a Watershed Protection District person. So, now you can't go, we don't have an alternate for you, and.
We have an interim Watershed Protection.
Oh, we do. Okay, all right, great. I wanted to make sure we have.
And so, that's the motion. I believe Brian has it. Do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
And if we could all please vote, I believe that puts us to our, we don't have any correspondence, we do have a, we do have a correspondence agenda. If we could have a motion on item And then we will be recessed until 1:30. Okay, good afternoon. We're back from our recess, and we're hearing, 1:30, de novo hearing to consider the request on a CUP, and this is Planning Division staff presentation. There you are.
Good afternoon, Chair Parks, Supervisors. Christina Burrow, our planning staff, for the record. Before I start my presentation, I just want to reiterate what the project is. The project is a conditional use permit request by the applicant, Verizon Wireless, to construct and maintain and operate a wireless communication facility in the coastal zone. And it also is an appeal of that decision that the Planning Commission made in June of this year to grant the CUP. Before I start with, go into what the appeal is about, I just want to reiterate what the project is and discuss that first. So, this is a vicinity map of the project site, and the project site is located about 945 feet from the Santa Barbara County Line, and the project site is in the unincorporated area of Ventura County above Rincon Point. Highway 101 and the Southern Pacific Railroad Line lie beneath the project site, and the site is actually on a 10-acre parcel and on a cliff above, above those two areas. And the proposed wireless communication lease area is going to be about 1,225 square feet. The zoning for the site is coastal agricultural with a slope-density formula overlay zone, and the general plan designation is open space, and the coastal area plan designation is agricultural. So, surrounding development consists largely of open space and agricultural areas. There's a residential development, the Rincon Beach area, which is 713 feet south of the proposed lease area, and the nearest residence is 397 feet northwest of the proposed lease area. So, to visually orientate yourself with the site, we have some.
Could you go back again, please?
Yes.
Could you go back one slide? Could you, could you pinpoint for the, for the board exactly where the cell tower?
So, there's this undeveloped. So there's this undeveloped area of land right here.
Right.
And the cell site is going to be proposed to be there.
And the, and the nearest residence is where?
Is this, and it's three hundred and ninety-seven feet.
Right, and is that the appellant?
No.
It's not, right, okay, and could you point out where the appellant is?
The appellant has a address in Carpinteria, that was on his appellate form. And the appellant actually owns a piece of property that is not shown on this map, but it's on, on this cliff and it is approximately over here. And it's a large parcel that does not have any dwellings on it.
What is the distance from the cell tower to the nearest residence again, you said three hundred and?
Three hundred and ninety-seven feet.
All right, and what is the distance from the cell tower to the appellant's property?
I would say it's more than two thousand feet. I don't, I have the exact number.
But not shown in this picture?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So here's a picture of the, of the site, looking north from the Rincon Point Recreation Area. Recreation area is here, this is the parking lot. And these are the existing row of palm trees that are on the project site. And this is on the project site and looking south towards the Pacific Ocean. So what is the applicant requesting? They're requesting a conditional use permit to install, operate and maintain a wireless communication facility. It is going to be a disguised stealth facility. It's a forty-five foot tall mono palm tree with a hundred and eighty-six square foot equipment area, six panel antennas, and they are going to be in two, two locations on the tree. Three antennas would be at the thirty-eight foot level and three antennas would be at the twenty-eight foot level of the tree. There's going to be two GPS units and a emergency generator. So this, this is just a picture of the site from the site plan. This yellow is the access road and it actually is a, there is an actual utility easement that's existing. And the blue is the lease area. And this is a site of the equipment plan for the proposed facility. And the proposed elevations, as you can see, the forty-five foot proposed mono palm is here with the existing row, some of the existing trees, palm trees in the background. And then this is just a visual simulation of the site. You have the existing on my left, which is what it is now, and proposed on the right with the wireless facility and the equipment and also a green, a chain link fence that's six feet tall with some green slats over it. And then this is a picture of the, what's, what the facility would look like when installed. You see, this is the existing on, on my left, which has no facility. And the proposed on the right, which has the proposed palm tree. So the public view shed, who's going to see the project? Well, the red areas on this map basically show where the potential view shed for the public would be. So mostly it's going to be on Highway 101 and just below the proposed project site. And also in the area of the Rincon Point parking lot. So the applicant's goal is to improve coverage along Highway 101, specifically northbound, and to also establish a coverage area between, they want to overlap the coverage between the Southern and California Network and actually the Santa Barbara County line and Ventura County line is that dividing line. So a look at the Caltrans ADT for the site, the average daily trips. There are sixty-five thousand ADT on that road. So basically, that is the potential if all the, if all the users on, on Highway one were Verizon customers, they would fill that gap in, in vehicle coverage with the installation of the site. So environmental review, planning staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration for the project. And the public review period was from April 1st to May 2nd of this year. And there are four mitigation measures that were placed on the project. There's biological mitigation measures and cultural resource mitigation measures, and those are spelled out in your board letter. So public notification, it was the same for the public hearing of the Planning Commission and for the notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Staff included a notice in the Ventura County Star. Also with property owners within three hundred feet and residences within a hundred feet of the site. And also the Rincon Point residents and property owners. Staff received one public comment on the MND and that was for citing of the wireless facility. And we also, staff also received sixteen public comments prior to the release of the, of the mitigated negative declaration. And those had two categories, they were talking about public health impacts from the wireless facility and citing of the facility. So now to the appeal. So as I mentioned, and on June twenty-third of this year, the Planning Commission granted the, the proposed project four to one. And in a timely manner, the appellant appealed that decision. And there's five appeal grounds that the appellant brought. These appeals actually cover four issue areas. And there are an alternative site analysis that was not considered, there's impacts on agriculture, there's impacts on surrounding properties, and site maintenance and facility abandonment was not considered. So specifically, ground of appeal number one, the appellant contends that there's, there was no alternative site analysis done for the proposed project and that actually is required per section sixty-four oh nine A of federal law that requires the governments to, to approve modifications to existing facilities. So staff contends that this ground of appeals without merit because the site is actually, that the, that the appellant had disclosed in public testimony at the Planning Commission, the site is actually just, just, just over the county line in Santa Barbara. So it's in Santa Barbara County, not in Ventura County.
Excuse me. Two things, one is you're talking about the loss of agriculture land, right, and the mitigation? And you said that isn't necessary to do because of the, is it the FCC laws that override it? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, my previous slide was talking about the issue areas, the four basic issue areas of the appeal. And I can get into the agricultural.
Oh, you haven't got there yet, okay.
Yes, not there yet.
And then you're also saying the, you're talking about the site in Santa Barbara County?
Yes.
And so we can't look at that site because it's not within our purview?
Well, it's not within Ventura County, so we can't require a facility, a facility to be in another county.
But can we not require them to look at an alternative site even if it isn't in Ventura County? An alternative is an alternative?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the, the, the basic theme here is that sixty-four oh nine under the federal law requires that we consider and allow nonsubstantial changes to existing facilities. We can't mandate them, though, that's something voluntary by the operator of facilities. So we can't mandate that this operator goes on a facility that is owned by somebody else. In terms of alternatives, the, the question before you under federal law is whether this particular facility is essentially the least intrusive means of accomplishing. In terms of something in Santa Barbara County, we can't, well, I can't say what your board can do and not do, but the theme is that decision makers of this county cannot, you know, cite something in another county as, as an alternative because we have no jurisdiction. So, so the issue before you is, is have, is this an appropriate place in terms of the alternatives available in Ventura County?
And so the answer is, we are only looking at alternatives within Ventura County. So I think about a mitigation measure, for example, for Sherwood, where they mitigated for the loss of oak trees by helping a woodland forest in LA County. So if you can mitigate an impact in one county and another county, I would think you could also look at alternatives that are borderless, if you will.
You can certainly look at alternatives, the issue there, at least with the Sherwood thing, was that was a voluntary action by the applicant to point out that there was a mitigation bank that they were willing to.
It was a mitigation measure?
Right.
That was done in another county?
It was available to them if they did, but we couldn't mandate work in another county.
And so the last point is that the MND concluded that there was no significant impacts on the environment, thus the alternative site analysis was not required.
Before you leave that, I just want to ask County Council. And Council, in your opinion, can, can we require, does Sequo require us to look at alternative sites outside of Ventura County?
Yeah, that's a good question, and the, the alternate sites analysis, it comes into play more with regards to federal law. And the county's authority to, I should say, the county's authority over cell towers is preempted to a large extent by federal law. And so under federal law, if the county is going to not approve a cell, cell tower, then the county or information has to be in the record that there's a technically feasible and potentially available alternative to fill the carrier's coverage gap. And so that's the, basically, the law that's in play here.
But does Sequo require us to, Sequo requires us to look at alternative sites?
Only if. Yeah, only if, if the project is going to have a significant effect. And so here, that, that threshold hasn't been passed.
So this slide is just a visual representation of the nearest Ventura County permitted site that's existing. And that is a site in Lock and Cheetah. It's basically adjacent to the railroad and to the Pacific Ocean. And so it's at a lower level elevation than the proposed site, which is on the hill top, on a cliff above Rincon Point. And so the distance between the wireless, those two wireless facilities is about one thousand seven hundred and eighty-one feet or about point seven miles between each site. So in order for the wireless facility, proposed facility and to provide coverage in that area, the site has to be on a, on a, on a hill as far as it can go to provide, to provide a direct line of sight for the facility. And that is, because there's existing terrain and the topography of the site, the two sites couldn't connect to each other. So appeal ground number two, the appellant contends that there's an LCA contract existing on the site and that, that staff did not consider this with regard to the review of the project. So the wireless facility in its physical area is going to be, is negligible because the wireless facility is proposed to be one thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet, the lease area. And only about zero point two nine acres would be required for brush, for brush clearance. And no agricultural crops will be affected because of the location of the facility, there's no crops there currently. And although there is an LCA contract on the property, staff is working with the property owner to bring the site into compliance with the LCA contract. And we actually have a member of staff, the LCA planner, here today to talk about the LCA, LCA contract if your board desires that. So appeal ground number three is that the staff report does not show any regard for the immediate property owners in the area. So as I stated before, the MND does conclude that there's no significant impacts on the environment as a result of the proposed project. And we actually received no, staff actually received no public comments from the property owners and residents within the four adjacent properties that are on, on, on that cliff near Bates Road. And appeal ground number four, the appellant contends that the project encroaches onto other parcels and does not show any contact affected by the encroachment. And actually, there was a parcel map waiver done in two thousand and three, the parcel map waiver number eleven fifty-seven. And it actually identifies an existing, existing utility easement from Bates Road to the project site, and that's identified in yellow here. And that was approved by deed in nineteen thirty-two. And so this picture just represents the access easement and the parcel with the project site in blue and a red star. And finally, appeal ground number five, the appellant contends that there's no conditions for minimum maintenance standards and dismantling of the site. And actually, there is, it's actually condition eighteen of the staff, of the board letter and the conditions of approval exhibit five that requires removal of the facility upon CP expiration or abandonment of the site. And also condition one requires the applicant to maintain the wireless facility within the lease area as per the project description. And finally, private road maintenance issues are not a county issue, they're a civil matter. So in summary, the MND concluded that there was no significant impacts on the environment. And the project is compliant with the coastal zoning ordinance requirements. The facility is designed as a stealth facility, a mono palm tree. And so it does blend in with the facility, with, with the existing landscaping of the site, which is predominantly palm trees. So we did receive some additional comments from the public. We have a letter, which is, I believe, exhibit thirteen of your, of your board packet. It's a letter from Paul Alberton, who represents Verizon Wireless. And the, the content of that letter basically spells out the need for the proposed facility and it also provides an alternative site analysis. And I do want to point out two extra exhibits. We do have two letters of support that were received today by, by staff, and I want to put those in the record. And also a memorandum from staff basically stating that there was some misnumberings of the mitigation measures in the board letter and this, and the staff report and this PowerPoint. And so those are reconciled with this, with this memo. And also to say that condition nineteen, the abandonment condition is actually not condition nineteen, it's condition eighteen. So we do have representatives from the applicant side and the appellant side here today and staff from the, the LCA planners here as well. So if you have any other questions, just want to conclude with the recommended actions. And staff requests that your board grant the CUP and deny the appeal for the recommended actions noted in your board letter. So that concludes my presentation.
Are there other questions for staff supervisors?
I was just going to ask on, on condition nineteen. Can you go back to that, condition nineteen? Removal of facility upon the expiration of, is that funding set aside for that for the future, or how does that work?
The removal of the facility is, is on the applicant as it is a condition of approval for their project.
I understand, but is there money set aside for the future, maybe ten years from now, twenty, whatever it is? How do we, how do we make sure that the applicant has sufficient funding for it? Am I making sense on that?
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt, and Supervisor Zaragoza. The, we used to hold a financial assurance for removal of cell towers and we subsequently didn't because we changed the conditions to make the property owner responsible in the event of the failure of the operator, they just happened to leave and there it was sitting there. It became the property owner's responsibility, so we had the property as the financial assurance for removal of the tower.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, we, thank you for the presentation. We have the applicant and the appellant, and the way we'll do it is each will get fifteen minutes. We'll have the applicant go first. And then at the end, you can each have five minutes for a rebuttal at the end of the testimony. So with this, we have this representative Verizon, is that Dwayne Bonham? Oh, sorry. Okay. Yes, if you can come forward, and yes, there's more cards, please do get them for us. Yes, if you can come forward, and yes, there's more cards, please do get them for us. Before, do you want, okay, before we go further, what we generally, what we do before we have testimony is we have our board disclose if they have had any contacts with the applicant, the appellant, or on this case, or information they've received on it.
I have not, no.
I've had no communication on either, with either side.
And Supervisor Long?
And nor have I. Okay, thank you, and if you could give us your name, and you have 15 minutes total, if you want to take it all or share it with your partners, it's up to you.
I think I will go ahead and share it with my partners. So I have Dwayne Bonham, which is the radio frequency engineer for Verizon, as well as Paul Albritton, legal counsel for Verizon as well, that you received a package of information as a supplemental exhibit. So we were assuming that the appellant was going to go first, so we could address any questions. So first of all, I'd like to see if there's any specific questions that came to mind during staff presentation that you might have, that I might be able to help answer. I'm assuming that you read the information that Mr. Albritton had given you with respect to the alternative site analysis that was considered, as well as sort of the process that we've gone through to get to this phase. We've been working on this spot that has this lack of coverage for going on three and a half years now, and finding a property that works well from all angles has been challenging as the geography lends a lot of challenges. So I'll start with that, just going back to the board and asking respectfully if you have any questions that I can answer at this point.
I have one.
Okay.
We're changing our building codes to account for seismic issues related to antennas to make sure that they're sturdy during earthquakes.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if this antenna facility is going to be retrofitted, or it won't even have to be retrofitted, but built with earthquake seismic standards in place. And I don't know if you're familiar with them, but I think it does change the design and the look, and I'm wondering if that was all considered.
It's my understanding, so if I understand those building codes have not been amended yet, is that right, to include that?
They will be, I think, at our next meeting.
Okay, so with that said, when we apply for our building permit, those new codes will most likely be in effect. And it's my understanding that what that entails is looking at the geologic soil condition, and then that footing that's actually underneath the proposed facility would need to be at the depth and width that would be meeting those code requirements. So we've been finding that more in jurisdictions, that they are changing those codes for those seismic conditions, and the building permit process is what ensures our compliance. But to my understanding, all of the compliance issues are below ground, not above ground, so it doesn't change the look of the facility that's visible.
Okay, and I've, I'm not sure, I have heard others describe the, it is a significantly larger structure, at least at the base. And so I just, I don't know if that's the case, I'm just throwing it out there, but as far as you understand, it's nothing that's going to change the appearance above ground?
No, so I would imagine the plate that actually holds the footing to the structure would be probably reinforced with stronger steel or something to that effect, but then the footing below the ground is what would be affected by those codes.
I think someone referred to it as like four legs instead of one, so that's, but I don't know.
That's not my understanding.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that is not my understanding.
Okay, so no visual impact?
No, no.
Thank you. Other, and I don't know if you had more testimony?
I don't right now, I think I'm going to wait and see as questions arise, but I am going to go ahead and let Mr. Albritton come up at this time and speak with you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon Wireless, thanks so much for hearing our project today, and with respect to this appeal, and I'll try and be very respectful of your time. I just handed some additional copies of the book that we've already sent to you, so if you already have one, you probably don't need one. It's the same thing that's in the, in the staff report, and I just was going to refer to it and wanted to make sure that you had it. As you heard, Verizon Wireless has been working for several years to try and fill this very well-known hole in our network, right around Rincon Point, 101, where there's, as you heard, there are 65,000 vehicle trips per day, and we're suffering poor network quality in that area. And Dwayne Bonham, the RF engineer who designed the site, can explain to you exactly that requirement. Our packet, I'll just go through quickly, we provide you a legal, the legal arguments, both federal and state, and local legal arguments in support of the site. I'll get to the federal law arguments in a few minutes, but one of the most important ones is that there has to be, to deny a site, there has to be substantial evidence for denial. And I just want to point out that we have provided substantial evidence for approval, having gone through a very long mitigated NEGDEC process, and provided you with photo simulations that show the limited aesthetic impact, the RF statement that shows that the emissions at the closest home are about 1.3 percent, I can't do the math fast enough, 70 times below the federal standard. So we meet all of those, all of those requirements. The packet has the photo simulations that you just viewed. We also include in here a written description of the gap that we're trying to fill, and Dwayne Bonham, our RF engineer, is here to describe to you as necessary the gap itself, including a coverage map showing the actual gap area that we're trying to serve, which includes about one mile stretch of Highway 101, and that's relevant in the moment when I get to the alternatives analysis, about a .7 mile, and then about a mile of Highway 150, and about a mile square that this site will serve in order to resolve that, what we consider a very significant gap in our, in our network. Then we also provided to you, we sent a text message, this is not a poll, it's a text message that goes out to our customers in the area, and the zip codes in the area, and says, would you, do you, would you need improved service, and would you support a faux facility at this address? And we had, I think the number was up with the two today, 399 text messages of support, people who are aware of this gap in coverage and would like to have Verizon Wireless trying to resolve that gap. So there's a big cellphone public out there that's looking forward to our resolving that. And then finally, I've included an alternatives analysis. Now, the alternatives analysis that we provide is, we provide to you basically for federal law reasons and not really in response to the appeal. But I think it very carefully, you'll see, goes through why we are where we are. And if you've been to the property, and I suspect you have, you know that there's a topographic tongue essentially that comes out from east to west over Highway 101. Highway 101 is skirting the ocean, and it's the one high point that looks down along Highway 101 as it, as it goes from east to west and then north in that area that we're trying to cover. And then also, that tongue looks north to Highway 150, where we're trying to cover, and provides this coverage area to us with antennas that are only 38 feet high, the antenna center line's only 38 feet high. If we move down towards Highway 1, down low where the AT&amp;T facility is, which we described here, we're not able to see that, that .7 mile, that three-quarter mile stretch of 101 that we're trying to cover. Those low utility pole sites only cover 500 to 1,000 feet in either direction, and we did review that ATT facility and determined it was too low, even though it's in another county, that it was too low, that it wouldn't provide the coverage that we need. And that's a utility pole, so we wouldn't be able to put the full six antenna macro site facility that we're trying to, trying to include. We also looked at areas, and we looked, obviously across the way, at the beach is too low, looked at higher ground on the other side, to the east of us on this tongue. If you move further away from the, from the edge of this, looking down at the Highway 101, you can tell that the tongue of land actually shadows the highway and prevents us from serving that. So the location that we selected is mostly as a result of topography and the area that we're trying to cur, cover, and the distance of the area that we're trying to cover. I want to quickly touch on the appellant's points, and then I'll come back and talk to you about federal law at the very end. The federal, the appellant's point about alternatives was really, he felt that SEQA required an alternatives analysis. And as your counsel told you, SEQA only requires an alternatives analysis if you're doing an EIR. And an EIR isn't justified here. In order to justify an EIR, you have to have substantial evidence of a reasonable argument that there's a significant impact on the environment. And the, there's no evidence of that, there's no substantial evidence of that. And so the staff elected to do a negative declaration, did the review, the negative declaration, require four different mitigations for us, including the butterflies, nesting birds, and cultural review as we construct, to determine that there would be no significant impact, no significant adverse environmental impact, and so that SEQA was qualified. So there's no alternatives analysis required under SEQA. The appellant also confuses that with something called the Spectrum Act, Section 6409 regarding modification of facilities, and I think you heard from your staff that that also is not relevant in this case. Now, we've done an alternatives analysis anyway, for federal law purposes, which I'll, as I said, I would get back to. I think staff carefully went through the other appeal issues very carefully, that we're only taking up .3 percent of the land, so it doesn't affect the ability to use 90 percent of the land for agricultural purposes.
Sure.
Yes.
I think you were trying to figure out your time, and that, the time is right up there on the screen, if you, if you want to see how much, I can see you keep looking at your watch.
Thank you, I have five more minutes.
My point is you have.
Yeah, you have time. You just look on the screen, and you can see it also.
And we're adding 10 more seconds because Supervisor Bennett interrupted you.
I think he's asking me to slow down. So I'll do that. I'll slow down.
I was looking at your watch a couple of different times. I just wanted to make sure.
I was trying to show it off.
Very nice.
Thank you. He complained about potential impacts on neighbors, and as we've heard, he's essentially not a neighbor, and the closest home is almost 400 feet away. There is an easement for utilities, and there's no encroachment there, and as you heard, there are adequate conditions to deal with maintenance and removal of the facility. So we think all of the appeal points are extremely well dealt with. So Verizon has worked very hard over several years to come up with a facility that is in the sweet spot, the right place to provide service to this very critical portion of Highway 1, to the beach communities there in the square mile, and also Highway 150 with one site. If we tried to resolve that problem, as our alternatives analysis reviews, with poles along the highway, it would take several poles in order to solve that, and there are no poles there, so we would be having to put new poles along Highway 101. We think that this is a superior and less intrusive facility, and particularly, the design of the palm tree behind a row of existing palm trees helps blend it into the community and allows you to make the five necessary findings that you need to make for this conditional use permit, as was done by the planning commission, as well as recommended by your staff. So I'll leave it there, and we'll come back for questions and on rebuttal to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And the other speaker then is, we have Paul Albritton. That's. Dwayne. Okay, got it. So that will conclude Verizon's testimony at this point, and then we will go now to the appellant. And I have Jonathan Brown, followed by Christine Brown. You can pick your own order, however. You get 15 minutes as the appellant, so how you would like to split your 15 minutes and with whom is up to you.
My name is Anthony Brown, and I'm the appellant, and I did not sign a speaker card because I told I'd be given 15 minutes to speak.
You will, but when you're done, go ahead and give us your speaker card, okay, so we have your information.
Okay, thank you.
And the clock can show 15.
Madam Chair and Supervisors, thank you for the time here today. My name is Anthony Brown, and I live in the rural carpentry area. I come before you as appellant to the planning commission's approval of the Verizon cell site at 8320 Bates Road at Rincon Point. My family and others are the neighbors, and they're here today with me to share information that we hope might help in your decision. I went to the June Planning Commission meeting with my son to observe land use process. I am a firm believer in landowners' rights and to a reasonable use of their property. What developed as the meeting went on was the unfortunate choice of using an incorrect, incorrect information as a basis for reviewing this proposed project. After careful study and further discussion with the property owner, I realized that I had to appeal the planning commission's action. I do so with reluctance, but there are just too many problems and inaccuracies remaining with this project. I did not invent the points in my appeal. Today, I welcome the opportunity to address the board directly on my concerns. I present these points based upon my own 50 years association with this ranch, and I have access to many ranch records through the decades. For the last 20 years, I have been part-owner and caretaker of the majority of the ranch, with daily awareness of this very parcel. I believe the current owners of this 10-acre parcel are doing an excellent job of maintaining prime agriculture. Unfortunately, this Verizon proposal threatens the existing environment because of poor planning review. The actual history of this parcel has been prime coastal agriculture since 1920. It is certainly not grazing land, as staff has presented it and analyzed it. I've only had three days to prepare for this presentation, but I'm sure that aerial maps through the decades will confirm what I am saying to you. The earliest map I have today is from Mr. Florinoy dated 1905, clearly showing this area as arable land, which at the time was the highest designation for farm land. And you can, if you care to take a look at what I've provided, it would be map number one, 1905. And the other half of that map, because I'll, I just had a crude way of taking a photograph of it to copy it, but it is, the number one and number two are of the same map, and the explanations are on the number two, and the highest designation is arable land, and it is clear on the map that the property that we are talking about is marked as arable land. I also have the original right here in a much larger form, if anybody is curious about that. Map, item number, I mean, well, copy number three is a 1931 railroad map, which goes along the distance of the property, which I also have here, the original, and it shows the line of cultivation, or pardon me, edge of cultivation, and that is, goes the full length of the property. And we actually farm using this 1931 map as a template to this day. Number four is a 1938 aerial photograph. I have a series of aerial photographs that go back to 1924, but this one is the clearest as far as today's discussion goes. And it shows that there's the patchwork, the quilt-type farming that has nothing to do with grazing. It's obviously being farmed. And I'm going to go back to what I wanted to say here, is that a Mr. Oda started farming this section of the ranch to snap peas and specialty tomatoes and pole tomatoes in 1920, and it has remained in prime production in one type or another all these years. Even this small triangle of land at the lower corner of the parcel is still planted to calla lily bulbs, just waiting for rain or irrigation. And I want to direct your attention to photo number eight and nine. Photo number eight, I took on the 6th of September of this year, showing the drip irrigation tape that was used to irrigate the green callas that are in that field that's proposed for development. Photo number nine is the 24th of September of this year, where that had an unauthorized removal of that drip tape. It was hauled away. But the, the one thing that hasn't been hauled away from that site is the fact that it's fully planted to green callas, the nice big tall green callas, and with enough rain or irrigation, they'll come up and prove that this is a agricultural parcel. I want to go back to a map that was used for photo number five. I want to go back to a map that was used for photo number five, photo copy number five, which shows a map that was used by the, either chosen by county staff or chosen by Verizon, but it shows that the concerned parcel is designated as grazing. Now this is, it's very interesting, but as a landowner, when I look at this map, and this is a map mapping system that's used throughout California, when I look at this map as a landowner and see the inaccuracies of this map, it makes me wonder about the accuracy of the rest of the state. Now, this came from county GIS files and as far as the applicant's designation of this property being grazing land, by using this map, they were correct. If you go through the GIS layers of this same county, you'll find another map, number six, that shows the crops that are planted on the properties. This is far more accurate. In fact, it is very, very accurate in showing that in agriculture. Photo number seven will be what Casitas Municipal Water District uses for the Bureau of Reclamation. This is a federal map and it shows that the property is mapped as class three and class four. That's eligible for irrigation water from the Bureau of Reclamation. This, I don't know how it works, but this is a federal map. I don't know if it would supersede a state map that is highly inaccurate. The reason I bring this to your attention is that by mislabeling this parcel as grazing land, the staff report misses the reality of analyzing the true historical use and avoids an accurate review as it pertains to SEQA and the negative declaration. My brother Jonathan will address this in more detail. The second point I wish to address is the fact that the project as presented to the planning commission makes no reference to the fact that this ten acre parcel is currently enrolled in the Ag Preserve Program. By its very designation, it is prime coastal ag and subject to closer review in regards to coastal policies. The planning commission made their approval decision without input or opinion from the Ag Preserve Advisory Board as far as I know. Maybe there's been subsequent information coming in, but as far as the June meeting, I don't think that they had any input whatsoever and I think that would have been a fair thing to have. The staff report maintains that this loss of prime agriculture will be minimal, but point three zero of an acre is still a net loss and combined with all the other non-farm uses, this contract may fall into non-compliance. Ventura County has always shown great respect for the provisions of the Williams Act and let's hope that this continues. Here is a copy of the original contract dated nineteen seventy-five. It's right here if anybody would care to look at it. It was subsequently rescinded and re-entered by me in two thousand two or two thousand six. I can't remember the exact date. Okay, the, regarding visual impacts and compatible uses, I assure the board that I have more than just vague concerns over the impact of this project. Specifically, my concern is injecting a non-agricultural use into a pristine setting with Verizon using the threat of applying federal law to get whatever they want. The staff report does, does do, it does not do an analysis of the potential maximum buildout of such a project. Where does local control get buried by federal statutes? Is this project going to grow until it rivals the destruction of Rincon Mountain? You can take a look at photo number eleven and that is a site on top of Rincon Mountain that is absolute eyesore. It used to be where the big bucks laid in the cool of the mist from the Pacific Ocean and now there's, it's just a trash pile. And a very profitable trash pile for the people concerned, I'm sure. Is Verizon going to sublet this site to other carriers if approved? How many? Ten, twenty? Is it going to look like photo number eleven in the future? Are you going to have any control over it at all? Can you, can you make sure that county council can assure you that you'll retain control? Please ask them. Point four, as represented in the staff report, the fire department's requiring clearing clearly overlaps onto the neighboring parcel and railroad properties. Is this good planning to potentially set neighbors into legal disputes? Now, I do not have a photo of the, what was proposed by Verizon, but in the file, it shows the fire department's overlay of where they want clearance and it clearly goes onto neighboring properties. So that isn't bogus either. Point five is maintenance. These fake cell site trees are so ugly when they get stripped of their palm fronds in windstorms. Without a maintenance condition, any visual camouflage would be lost. I'm sure you've all seen the cell palm at the Ventura Fairgrounds. It's a ragtag example of a palm tree. To conclude, I humbly ask the board to reconsider this poorly planned project and send it back for an accurate review and realistic consideration of alternate locations. Other cell companies have shown that for very little impact and investment, they solved this problem. And I'm going to ask you to please look at one more photograph, number ten. This, I did not put an arrow on it, but in this photo, sort of left upper center is the AT&amp;T pole that's about three hundred and forty yards from the proposed site and they have two antennas on it, one pointing down the highway and one pointing north up through the gap. The AT&amp;T has the, at least what they publish are much nicer maps showing their coverage and AT&amp;T customers don't have the problem that the Verizon people have. And one more thing I'd like to say, do I have any time left?
No.
Oh.
No, but.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I lost it.
That's okay, we did have the time up there and it is over. Do you just have one more piece of information you haven't given us?
I would like to say one other thing.
Okay.
I know that topography very, very well and I know that they have hired an engineer to design it and place it. But the reality of it is even where they've placed it, there's still going to be a shadow on the northbound side of it, northwest side of it. And AT&amp;T is, they're sitting in the sweet spot. Please consider a collaboration of putting a taller utility pole, a couple of antennas on it and solve your problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions? Okay, we may have some for staff afterwards, but you will also get a rebuttal at the end.
Thank you very much.
So we have other speakers, the Brown family, right? We have Jonathan, Christine, Nicholas and Jehane. Jean, and you can go ahead and come up and speak, give us your name and you each have three minutes.
Is this on? Okay, thank you. My name is Jonathan Brown. I speak to you as a former planning commissioner for the first district in Santa Barbara County years ago. I want to just follow up on a few details presented by my brother Tony. Because of the initial planning analysis incorrectly labeling this project site as grazing land instead of its true designation as prime agriculture, the modified negative declaration bypassed some of the coastal zoning requirements such as by developing available lands not suited for agriculture prior to the conversion of agricultural lands. That's number six D. So I believe that without accurate analysis, the modified negative declaration is a flawed document and needs to be recirculated. The mistakes made in this faulty analysis and the failure to get the Ag Preserve Committee's opinion and approval prior to the planning commission's June hearing has presented the public with a poor planning document. The public and the landowner have the right to know what the maximum buildout of such a facility is in light of the fact that local control appears to be lost to federal regulations. Perhaps with a true and accurate review, secret requirements may indeed come into consideration because I quote from section six, Alternatives, first paragraph, last sentence, quote, "There is no ironclad rule governing the nature or scope of alternatives to be discussed other than the rule of reason." I certainly hope the board will consider other alternatives for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Christine, followed by Nicholas.
Good afternoon, Honorable Members of the Board and Supervisors. I want to address a point that was made in the written document that was sent out by Verizon. Oh, sorry, my name's Christine Brown.
Thank you.
I wanted to address a point that was made by the, in the document sent out by Verizon where they were claiming that in the area of the freeway, it wouldn't be an eligible site because, quote, "That area is an eligible, a potential eligible state scenic highway." So that was one of the reasons that they ruled that out because of the potential of being eligible as a state scenic highway. And further that, quote, "They didn't want to present any visual impacts." So unfortunately, I don't have a PowerPoint, but we're all talking about Rincon Point as I'm sure you're familiar and I wanted to situate a different perspective because the perspectives that they used in their presentation and their reports, I don't know that it places it in a fair way. So the site is literally just above Rincon Point this way, if that makes sense. So to give that an aerial point of view, right above this massive vein of one oh one freeway. So incredibly close from here to there. And as we all know, this is a very, very beautiful spot, so no arguments there. Now I want to speak to that because this spot is not only a beautiful spot, but it's an iconic spot that's incredibly meaningful to a lot of people. In an article in the local independent paper titled "A Queen and a King," the image is world renowned and you'll see a larger version of it here, the poster. It's overlooking Rincon Point and the caption under the photo says, "Easily the most iconic picture taken of one of North America's most iconic surf spots. This nearly forty-year-old image of the queen captured by legendary local lensman Steve Fizell truly has stood the test of time." Now this is from a January twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten article, so it's been over forty years at this point. But it's absolutely right. It is iconic. It's an enduring iconic image, so much so that, I'm sure you guys all know Patagonia right next door, they chose that iconic image to be the cover of their book. So it's internationally recognized as a historic and iconic site and we are the caretakers and sewers supposed to protect this. So I would like to argue that, let's please take into consideration not only the perspectives that they brought of where this site is going, but this one as well because that's where they want to stick the site and I want to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We then have Nicholas, followed by Jehane.
My name is Nicholas Brown. I'm the son of the appellant and the property caretaker for the neighboring property that surrounds the entire site. I have two letters today from local prominent neighbors and artists. The first one is from Jeremy Harper who could not be here today. He is the artist of this painting as long as, as well as many others that features the Queen of the Coast view. He says, "To whom it may concern, I have been lucky to paint the scenery and enjoy the pristine views above Rincon Point for nearly a decade. It is from this special ranch that I am treated to a glimpse back in time to early California. In a day and age with never-ending growth pushing up from the south like a sickening virus, it is precisely places like these that need to be protected from technological eyesores. I strongly urge the powers that be to relocate their proposed cell towers down the hill closer to the freeway where the magical views that I know and paint will not be cluttered with signs of urban growth. Please consider the sincere voices of opposition and consider an alternative location for the cell towers. Thank you very much for your time, Jeremy Harper." A second letter from a neighbor at the Rincon Point neighborhood, Mr. Doug White. He is out of the country, but he has asked us to share this. He says, "I've been a homeowner at eight one two eight Pues de Del Sol Rincon Point since nineteen sixty-four. I would like to reiterate my opposition to the proposal to construct a cellular transmission tower on the ridge line of the old Rincon Del Mar Ranch overlooking the point. See previous email correspondence with Christina Bowero of September twenty-fourth, 2014. I would contend that ridge lines in the coastal zone, particularly in as beautiful an area as the Rincon Del Mar, should be protected from the construction of crudely designed cellular transmission towers masquerading as pine or palm trees. The ridge line of Rincon Del Mar is a precious view shed that should not be squandered in the interest of such commercial development. Thank you for your consideration, Douglas M. White." And my final word is I agree with what has been said so far and I respectfully oppose this project and I hope that you can consider our point of view as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Jehan Brown, followed by Kirk Peterson.
Good afternoon, Honorable Members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Jehan Brown and I am the neighboring surrounding property owner of the proposed site. And this is, before I continue, I want to show you the poster of the Queen of the Coast. And I'm sure you're all familiar of. And since the beginning, as I mentioned to the Verizon lawyers when he called me in two thousand and fourteen, I have been strongly opposed to that cell tower. I am here today because I like my neighbors and value living peacefully with all people. And I'm also here today because even though I understand the financial incentive for both the Lisor and the Lisi to build the cell tower, there is something much bigger at stake here. And that is the historical iconic value of the Queen of the Coast as it is known the world over. This unique site is renowned as an iconic surf point, a great source of interest and income for carpinteria from people from around the world. Once the site is altered. Once the site is altered, it will never be the same again. We personally experienced the drop of the cars at the Bates exit. It's an inconvenience of a few seconds in our rushed and busy lives. The signals always resume. Can't we resist that instant gratification of a cell signal for the benefit of preserving the somewhat still pristine and historical natural landscape? Technology keeps improving every day. In a few years, maybe even a few months, modern technology will come up with something better for our need of fast and reliable and uninterrupted communication. The tower might be obsolete then, but the beautiful natural landscape would have been tarnished and altered forever. And the next generations will be deprived of this unique wonder. It is our responsibility, mine and yours, as stewards of this earth, to appreciate this gift of natural beauty we have been blessed with in our corner of the world. It is our responsibility to preserve for future generations who seek healthy fun and peace in the outdoors, to do our best to save the Queen of the Coast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jehan. Our next speaker then is Kirk Peterson, followed by Brooke Harvey Taylor.
Good afternoon. I got notified about this meeting, hearing not too long ago. I live currently within less than 400 feet from the proposed site they're installing this tower, or proposing to. And first off, you know, I don't know if this applies, or you guys can address this, but the first thing that comes across my mind is the health risks for my family and I, being so close to the site. We love it there. It's a beautiful view. And, you know, our view would be deeply impacted. We moved there because of that. And so those are the two major concerns I have. Also, we go down to the beach a large amount of the time in the morning and afternoons, and along with many surfers and beachgoers. And I think all of these people would be severely impacted with the visual impact, being there, enjoying the natural beauty that Rincon Point has. You know, I've seen these cell towers up close, and they call them, you know, they do their best to make them look like trees, but I really honestly think it's still a very poor job. And they also offer the health risks, the radiation potentials for people close by like myself. So anyways, I ask that you guys please do not allow this to happen. And I definitely oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Duncan Abbott? And I believe you are the last speaker, unless I haven't called someone? I haven't called someone. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board Members and all. My name is Duncan Abbott. I live on 9126 Rincon Road Ventura. And our family has been there for about 100 years. Our ranch is neighboring the Browns. My house has been there for 170 years. It qualifies for a landmark, but we're not there yet. Anyway, we've been through alternative situations before on our property. For example, Highway 150 has fought for many years to change their path and come halfway, a quarter, a third of the way up our driveway towards our house to make the road faster. And so safer at either end was a right-angle turn. So faster doesn't help. I bring this up because we came up with an alternative plan to Caltrans, which is impossible, but we did it. And we were able to take their plan and change the angles, same angles and all, but put them in different places so that it didn't take quite so much of our property and impact the property. This is almost similar to what's going on with a cell site. You change that and traffic coming in and out, other things that go on, taking care of it, the maintenance of it all, et cetera. I'm totally in favor of an alternate plan. I guess there is an alternate site. And I would urge you to consider the alternate site. It can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke Harvey Taylor is our last speaker before the rebuttal.
Hi. Thanks for taking the time, Chair and Board Members, to hear us. And I'm speaking on behalf of surfers and the Hope Ranch Surf Club, which is, their membership is over 100 people. And also all the surfers who surf at Rincon, who, you know, the beaches in California bring over $10 billion of revenue to our state every year. Carpentry estimates that it gets about 2 million visitors, so I'm sure Ventura gets a lot more. I'm also a surfer and a mother of three, and I also live at Ventura Point. So I'm a resident there in Ventura County. And Rincon has been called one of the top three surf spots in the world. Like, as pointed out, it's the Queen of the Coast. It gets visitors from all over the world. And sitting in the lineup, I've been able to meet people from South Africa and Hawaii and people just sitting there in our ocean appreciating being in this spot. And we all look up at Rincon Mountain. We all know it's this incredible majestic area, and we can see the agriculture. We all appreciate it, and it brings us a lot of joy. And imagine how many people are going to come here, sit in that lineup, look back at the mountain, and see a cellphone tower. Like, to me, as stewards of this community, of our county, what a blight that we would have allowed to have happen when there really are alternative places. And I am an AT&amp;T user, so I have amazing service up and down the coast. I think the AT&amp;T location is incredible. I've never had problems. And I think it's interesting that 390 people responded to the Verizon ask. But how many visitors come to Rincon every year? It's been estimated that almost 500,000 visitors come to Rincon, and that's on the Ventura County side and Santa Barbara side. And again, I think that the point that the location is the superior and least impactful place for the tower is absolute false. That is, there's no way that this is the most superior place. Maybe for Verizon and the one citizen, one citizen has been able to say, "Yeah, you can pay me to put this tower on my land." And that shouldn't supersede everybody else who comes to enjoy that view and everybody else who respects Rincon and everybody else who loves being there. And I think that, again, it's our job to make sure that we caretake this land. My kids, all three of them, surf. And for the rest of their lives, will they be sitting in the lineup at Rincon looking up at the cellphone tower, just, you know, regretting this? And so for me, as their mom, it was really important to stand up and say, "I really oppose this. I know hundreds and hundreds of surfers who oppose this that, you know, unfortunately aren't here today. And I wish we all had had more time." I didn't get the original notice that they claim was sent. So for me, I got the second notice, and I am one of the 16 people who gave, you know, my opposition. But I think that if a lot more people knew about it, it would be a much bigger issue. So hopefully, it doesn't get to be an issue after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will, I've got all the people who wanted to comment. We'll go back then to the rebuttals. And is there a specific order that we should choose? I think I would then go with the applicant and then the appellant. And this would be five minutes. And I don't know if we've received a card yet from the appellant. Okay.
Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon again. And I will invite some of my colleagues to come up. Let me go through a couple of the points that were made. There was a concern about the agricultural use. And I think you can tell from the photo simulations that this area is not currently used for agricultural purposes. As the staff pointed out, it's 0.3 acres. It's 0.3% of the area, the 10-acre parcel, and won't affect the agricultural use. I want to also point out, though, I was in a hearing in Santa Cruz County recently, and Verizon Wireless facilities actually enhance agricultural use. There are many agricultural facilities that work with our cell network, including those that monitor moisture and determine when watering is required, monitor fertilizer, monitor tanks, drive tractors, in fact. So in our recent hearing in Santa Cruz, the cell tower was considered to enhance agricultural production and save water and other purposes. With respect to the fire department setback, that condition number 33 that the appellant is referencing clearly says that the setback ends at the property line. So it doesn't encroach onto other properties. And so I think that's clear from number 33, that that's not an issue. The AT&amp;T site, we've referenced that. It's a utility pole. It's a very small microcell. It covers a very small area and basically doesn't fit into our network. Our closest site is about four miles, well, in carpentry, four miles to the northwest. Then we have a site that's about one and a half miles to the southeast. And cell networks are built like sprinklers on a lawn. You try and minimize the number of towers in order to provide the service and allow crossover from one cell tower to the next. And that's how our network is designed and why the AT&amp;T facility is too low and too small to provide for our purposes. Aesthetically, these palm trees, yes, they've improved. And we feel that it is designed to blend in with the existing palm trees that are there, that because of the angle, will make our pole look in line or closer to in line with those facilities. And we think that in terms of colocation, which was raised, any colocation couldn't defeat the concealment element of that palm tree. If there's going to be a colocation, it has to come back through the whole CUP process for somebody else to go there. And you certainly can make the decisions as to how that affects aesthetics or agriculture or anything else when that comes back up to you. There was a question about maintenance. After the site is built, there's maybe one visit per month with a small truck to look at the facility. But otherwise, there's no ongoing maintenance. One commenter said that you've got to look at the big picture. And from our perspective, with the number of surfers and visitors that are coming by, the big picture is that this facility provides important emergency 911 services for everybody on that beach and everybody in that area. I'm a former windsurfer. I used to carry a cellphone in a waterproof packet in case I got swept out of the Golden Gate. And E-911 services are essential on a beach, and particularly when there are crowds and when there are sources of potential injury. The demands on the Verizon Wireless network are doubling every year. The amount of data and voice that's required to keep the network going is doubling every year. This morning, I heard on the way in that the Golden Gate Bridge is now using text messages as a suicide hotline as another means that cell phones are being used. The state, just two weeks ago, announced that they're going to have a text message earthquake alert system that they feel in the next year will give us a two-to-five-minute warning of an earthquake. That takes a lot of wireless capacity to get those text messages out to people for earthquake. But those are the kinds of things, when you look at big picture, that are essential. And I have to say, probably in closing, before I bring up my colleagues, that there was talk about future generations and this view, the permits for 10 years. And so we don't expect the technology to change in 10 years. But it is, limited to 10 years, and would be coming back to you. We still feel that the design, somebody said when you get close to these trees, they don't look so much like trees. And that's true to an extent. But that's why this site is distant. In fact, you have to come up a long private road in order to get to this tree. The closest home is 400 feet away. And the views are distant of this tree. And that's why we feel that it's been designed to aesthetically blend into the area. I'd like to call up the RF engineer, Dwayne Bonham, for a minute to talk about that AT&amp;T.
You have 15 seconds.
Okay.
Twelve.
Thank you.
Nine.
Go a few seconds over. Just a couple of points. One, the AT&amp;T site is on a telephone pole. Telephone poles are non-collocatable. You can't locate. We would have loved to have gone on that pole. However, it's a non-collocatable site. Same thing applies to a monopalm. Monopals are something that you can't locate a second carrier on. Okay? If you have any questions, do you want...
Right, we do have some questions. Supervisor Long has a question for you.
I have a question. So this is a 10-year permit. Let's say technology does advance to a point that there's no need then for this. Is there a removal, you know?
Yes, I think it's condition 19. Is that, I think I got the number right?
It's condition 19.
Eighteenth, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we're obligated to do that.
Supervisor Sarah Gustin?
Yeah, one of the individuals mentioned the health risk. What are the health risks on the project?
We've done the FCC required calculations. And at the nearest home, the RF emissions are 1.3% of the federal permitted public exposure limit. So that's, I think I tried to calculate in my head. It's not 100 times below, but it's about 70 times below the standard. So this facility is well within the FCC emission guidelines. And Verizon, of course, these are billion-dollar licenses, and they don't risk them by putting facilities that are beyond the FCC requirements. And the network, as this facility will fill a hole in between two other facilities. When that happens, the phone itself, I took mine out of my pocket, has to talk to the tower as well. And so it has to ramp up its energy in order to talk to the tower. The more the network is what they call densified, or the towers get closer together, the overall reduction, actually, in emissions. So this turns out to be an overall benefit. But in this case, well below the emission standards allowed by the federal government. And as you know, once you reach that threshold, it's sort of beyond the control of county regulation. It's federal law that says that that's not a term under which you can deny the site. Similarly, we've shown that there's a significant gap, and this is the least intrusive means of filling that gap. And so the federal law compels approval of this.
And the other question I had was, the gap is one mile, I think is what you said?
We're filling about a square mile.
A square mile?
The gap in Highway 150 is about a mile long. And the gap on Highway 101 is about 3/4 of a mile long. And that's all in our documents.
Does the AT&amp;T cover that? How come AT&amp;T covers and not Verizon?
I should let Dwayne answer that question. AT&amp;T obviously has a different network. I can't speak to the quality or the reliability of their network in that area. But a small cell, Verizon just put 400 small cells in San Francisco, and they cover anywhere from 500 to 1,000 feet.
Yeah, as was mentioned earlier, AT&amp;T has a site there on what we call a JPA pole or a brown telephone pole in that area. We look at those first, as a business perspective of Verizon, that we don't pay anything to go on those poles. So as an engineer, that's the first thing I'm going to look at. It's just a better business deal for us than trying to lease land from somebody. And it's also a much quicker permit process. So yeah, we did exhaust that. I've been working on this project. My predecessor, I think it's, we've been working on this one for about eight years now, trying to find a solution for this problem at the county border. A little bit of fighting back for it in our SoCal network and our Northern California network. And just going through multiple iterations, we've looked at poles down in the parking area. We've looked at the brown poles. We've gone through, I think, one other land lease issue where we tried to work with the landlord there. So this isn't, this definitely isn't the first thing we've looked at.
So in order to cover that mile, if you didn't have that palm tree type, you would have to have a multiple...
We'd have to have multiple poles. And there are no poles in a portion of Highway 101 that we need to cover. So I mean erecting, which I would think would be an extremely difficult task to erect a pole where there are no poles right along Highway 1 South at this point.
Thank you.
I know that there are areas along the freeway that Caltrans allows for cell towers or WIP antennas to go on or relays on top of their lights, right? But you were saying there aren't any on the freeway in this area?
There are none on the freeway in this area. Once in a while, Caltrans has allowed somebody to go on. It's a very time-consuming process to try to get that done. And it has to be an existing structure that's already there.
Right.
And I don't know that there's lights.
And that's... And that's, that's, with the understanding, you know, the preference obviously would be if you didn't have to put in a big antenna to use the smaller little relay ones on poles, that, you know, is definitely the preference. And I just wanted to know if you had looked at the, what you have at Caltrans available there and even though it may take longer, the outcome I think would certainly be a benefit scenically, you know?
Yeah, we did, we did look at that, but there, there's a number of difficulties. One, there's no fiber route through there, which would mean undergrounding fiber, that, which, you know, in some places these work, I know in Santa Barbara County, we have sites on light poles along Highway one-on-one north of Santa Barbara through a stretch there. But there's also power that runs adjacent to the freeway there and that allows for a fiber route to connect them. We don't have those utility, above-ground utility and fiber routes south of the point.
If I, if I may, I negotiated the first master agreement with Caltrans in nineteen ninety-six and I was an expert witness in January regarding Caltrans, use of Caltrans facilities. And Caltrans generally allows facilities under their airspace rights committee, or the dark committee it's called. And Caltrans facilities generally are on park and rides or other structures that are outside of the federal right-of-way. They don't like to allow poles in the federal right-of-way because under state law, that would allow other utilities to run right along the right-of-way. So generally where you have a brown pole adjacent to a federal highway, there's another road or easement that's creating that, that access. So, you won't see today anyway, strings of poles along federal highways. And there are, San Mateo Bridge, there are some certain structures of Caltrans that have, that have poles along them, but it's because they're, the structure that's being used and not the actual right-of-way, so.
Right, and I.
I could go into that in great depth.
As I recall, this is the case in Thousand Oaks where the cell company did put an antenna on an existing pole on the Caltrans right-of-way. And that's why I asked that and obviously that would help this matter, but you don't see that that is the case, that there are no Caltrans poles in the right-of-way in that area?
Correct. When you drive down that coastline, there are no poles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are there other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
And now we have the appellant who has five minutes for rebuttal. And you have your card for us, thank you.
I have a request of planning, if you could go through your presentation and see if you could find the photograph that shows the fire department's overlay photo on the proposed site. Would that be possible to find that?
And are you asking that that be on the screen or?
Please, if it could go up on the screen.
Okay. And can you begin your presentation while we work to see if we can do that?
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Baca, you'll look to see if we can get that, thank you.
This, when it was proposed to the planning commission in June, unless I missed something, this was supposed to be a project that was going to be taking care of the shadow on the one-on-one. Okay. My, I have, I have suspicions about that. I wonder, what is the big picture of this project? I've heard you say that you're not going to be able to, to have competitors put anything on your palm tree, but what's to keep a competitor from going right next to you and establishing a much greater footprint? There was a comment by the attorney that this is not impacting egg. I would dare you to come up to that property with a shovel and I'll show you where the bulbs are. It is planted and I'm here to tell you that and you're not, you're not gonna tell me that it's not planted. I planted it. Most, every photo, tree in that photo was grown by me from seed and planted by me. So, I, I, I know what I'm talking about there, it's planted to egg. And is there a, a chance to, to bring up that photo at all?
Is it, is, I think they're looking at trying to get that photo up.
Okay.
Chair Parks, I don't see a copy of the photo and I don't see that in the staff report, so I'm not sure, you know, where that particular map is.
It was in the Verizon proposal that, that showed what their proposal for the site was.
Was it part of the PowerPoint that Verizon did? Okay, so we, if we can put the Verizon PowerPoint?
As far as.
You don't have that, okay.
I've certainly seen it, I just don't have it with me.
Yeah, and we, we don't have that available to put up, we might be able to find it in the planning commission.
Okay, well I just wanna counter the comment that it doesn't impact the neighboring property.
Okay.
The landowner is sitting right here, it certainly does go onto her property and it goes over onto the railroad property.
Are you saying that the, the site, the siding, the actual structure is?
No, I'm talking about the, the footprint that the fire department that, for clearance, what they are requiring.
Oh, I see.
Is going, encroaching upon the neighbor's property. And I thought I made that pretty clear in my appeal.
Okay, and we will ask out of staff if that's the case, thank you.
Okay. Lost my train of thought there, I'm sorry.
Well then let's go ahead and ask staff right now, since we've been interrupting you anyway.
Madam Chair, members of the board, on, I'm, I'm glad Mr. Brown brought this up because I found a sentence that shouldn't be here, but anyway, condition thirty-three says, "All grass and brush shall be removed for a, a distance of thirty feet adjacent to towers, equipment cabinets, and generators, or to the property line if less than thirty feet." So there's no clearing required off, off-site.
Well, that answers that.
It, it's not required.
I stand corrected. I just saw the diagram and I thought it impacted the neighbors.
Madam Chair, there was a diagram in there, but it had to do with biologic analysis where the biologist was looking at a greater radius from the site for species and animals and that kind of thing. It doesn't have anything to do with the fire clearing.
Okay, well in the last few seconds here, I'm going to make a request of the board to carefully consider what you've heard today and I'm going to make a request of Verizon to call up AT&amp;T and see how they figured it out, see if they can't put a pole right beside them with two antennas and take care of all of this for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, I appreciate the, the hearing and you can have your seat, I do have a, just a follow-up question. That thirty feet is sufficient for the fire department in terms of requirements for brush clearance from structures? I know, for example, with the Santa Rosa Valley transmission lines, they did tremendous brush clearance, chopped trees and all that, just because they were near the transmission lines, but the thirty feet is sufficient from the, this project?
Yes, Supervisor Parks.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Sure.
And this closes our public hearing now. We'll go back to our board for comments, if we have any other questions and potentially a motion. What we have before us is a de novo hearing, so we're hearing it brand-new, so they have an opportunity to either approve the application or to deny it. The planning commission voted, was it unanimously? No, what was the planning commission vote?
The vote was four-one and the commissioner didn't give a reason why.
And which commissioner?
Commissioner Duquesne.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify though, Chair Parks, one issue that came up time and time again, where I, I heard several times that the document was incorrect on the issue of grazing. And so I just wanted to speak really quickly how we get to that. So the board has adopted initial study assessment guidelines and that's how the county assesses what the environmental document would be. And the tool that we use for agriculture is through the Department of Conservation, IFI maps, that's an important farmland inventory maps. They're done every other year by the Department of Conservation, they're given to us on GIS and that is the tool that we use to determine what the threshold is. So, it's the state IFI mapping that says that property is grazing. We clearly say in the environmental document that we know that land is being farmed, so we say it's being farmed. The small piece is not being farmed right now, the, the document clearly shows that, it's on page twenty-two, so there's no dispute that we know it's being farmed, it's just that how we do the environmental analysis, it's grazing. So, say even if it was prime agricultural land and the general plan designation was agriculture, the threshold to do an EIR is still five acres. We're talking about twelve-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet for the lease area and with the brush clearance, less than a third of an acre. So even if it was prime agricultural land, it wouldn't trip the threshold to have a potentially significant impact in requiring EIR.
That was my question, so we require a impact to five acres, is that right?
Five acres if it's prime agricultural land through the IFI and if the general plan designation is agriculture. And then when it goes down to unique, it gets less and less, you know, the, it goes to ten acres and fifteen acres.
I see, I see.
So that's the thresholds that we operate under.
And so, because this is not five acres, impacting a third of it is not considered a significant impact based on the county's thresholds?
That's correct. And, and just, I'd also wanted to mention two other things, I think that the antenna at the fairground, it bothers me too, but we don't have those, you know, those fronds, we have a very proactive program for our wireless facilities and so we're out there all the time. We have a, a condition, a condition, it's in Exhibit Five, it's condition nine-A that says they have to maintain the facility and we go out there routinely and make sure that the fronds on the palm trees or the, all the other kind of trees that we have, and we have several right now, that those are constantly updated and maintained. And then also, I, I do think it's important that we recognize the uniqueness of the county, that we do only allow wireless facilities for ten years, that's very, very unique because we do think that technology changes and maybe it wouldn't change in ten years, but it might change in twenty. And so we have an opportunity to look at all of our facilities again in ten years to see if technology changed or to see if there's a, a better, a better look or a better product. And I know in Santa Rosa Valley, we permitted things maybe twenty years ago that we didn't like the, the way that they looked, they were some faux rocks. And so we have the opportunity every twenty years to come in and make things look better or take down taller facilities and make them shorter, so it is a small timeframe and we are very unique in that regard.
And, and I, I would just say that in some sense, aesthetics is in the eye of the beholder. Some people like the big fake boulders, some thought they looked like big fake boulders, so you have that. Are there any other comments, questions, consideration of a motion, Supervisor Bennett?
This was really, you know, we have a lot of hearings and sometimes they're productive, sometimes they're not. This was a very productive hearing and so I want to compliment the Brown family and compliment the Verizon people and staff because if you came in here and you didn't know anything about this and you were trying to figure it out right now, you get a pretty good idea. And if you've done the homework in advance, then this was a very good hearing. So, again, I want to thank everybody and compliment people. I'm always impressed when a family comes together like this and to see the Brown family speaking and, and, you know, with one voice on this issue is, is heartening from my standpoint. The issue that I see for us as a board is that the burden of proof is sort of on us. We, because of the federal law, we can't, we have to have a reason, a compelling reason to, to deny. We, it's not like we just go, oh, this is what we like and this is what we don't like. And if we, if we had that standard, this would be a different kind of hearing, but we have a standard where we've got to get over a certain threshold to be able to say no in, in this situation. So, the, the way I see it is that the appellant has made, most of your comments have been about the legal question as to whether this was properly identified as grazing land versus prime agricultural land. And that's, you know, that, that strikes me as what I've heard, you know, primarily in terms of that. So, just hearing the, the response there, I also checked with, with county council, if, if that land is not being farmed right now in terms of prime agricultural production, then the, the spot right there where they're doing that, would it, would it make a difference? I mean, how much, I should say, is, is, is the county, does, does, can the county use that to get over this threshold and say, no, we're not gonna let Verizon go there, from your opinion?
No, no, the, the fact, county, the county specifically looked into whether the, the project site was under agricultural production right now and it's not. And so regardless of what the, the property is designated as by the state, whether it's grazing or crop production land is, is irrelevant. The pertinent fact is it's not under agricultural production right now.
So I think we heard a fair amount about that legal side of it, but I would offer to you that, in my mind, the good government side of it is the aesthetics. A person talking about, this is, this is an iconic place and you don't, you don't willy-nilly just for profits or convenience, you know, mess up, mess up a, a, a place. So that's the good government item, but we, we have to really, we have a threshold there too, that's more as Supervisor Parks is in the eye of the beholder. And my view is that because this, these ferns and this, this tree is gonna be fairly far away from the public, the, if the ferns stay on the tree, I don't think we've desecrated a, you know, the queen of, of the coast there, is certainly how I would see it. So what I am concerned with though is, it is true, if you get storms coming through there, you get those ferns, ferns knocked off, you do have something that looks every time you go by the fairgrounds and, and all of that. So I would like to ask staff if there, I'd like to have a more robust maintenance measure in there rather than just saying it has to stay like it is and then, I want some, something else if staff could think about that for a minute while we hear the comments from the other board members, but I'd turn to the Verizon people if they have ideas about things they've done to assure that we're gonna get prompt replacements of ferns if they get blown off in this particular spot because it is, is so iconic. And while staff is doing that, I'll certainly listen to my colleagues.
The question I have is, is the palm fronds, are they artificial or are they, so they can be, are they gonna be, they're artificial, so they can be replaced then? And I think that's important. The other thing that I heard was that there's really no health issue and as far as is concerned. And I'd rather see one pole, and I'm sorry, than a lot of poles along the, the one-on-one. And, and I, and I really respect the Browns because I, I think the supervisor said it very well, that family sticking together is extremely important, but I'm not sure if, in the federal law, I think we're almost, we can interfere with it, is that correct?
The burden would be on the county to, to show substantial, substantial evidence that would allow us to deny it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. I too appreciate the very thorough and measured comments on all sides on this and it's, we've had these before us over the years and they're, they're, they're never a unanimous decision of support for, from the public side for these towers, yet the proliferation of the smartphones and the other technology that, that requires, that requires sometimes for the public safety to have enough of a synchronized connection is, is also important to us. I think, and we have in the past also been firmly informed of the, of the subordinate position to federal law on, on matters that pertain to communication, so. I, I too would, knowing the area, would, would prefer one, one tower as opposed to a string of poles and also agree with looking at the, addressing the aestheticness of protecting that with either responsibility, I would say responsibility on, on Verizon and the leasehold that there's, there's at least, when we know there are storm conditions, whatever, that there's immediate repair and consideration for the aesthetic replacement of whatever may have been damaged at that time. And then in ten years, to be certain, to inform the public, should the Verizon continue, wish to continue application for a permit, that there's full input and. to continue application for a permit, that there's full input and feedback on how have they performed as a neighbor. So that the board sitting then will have the opportunity to have that assessment.
You'll be back by then, right?
I, I definitely share concerns because this is such a scenic area. And I find it slightly ironic that one of the reasons Verizon isn't looking in, along the coast is because it has the potential for being a scenic highway. And I think by putting this tower up there, you reduce the potential of it ever becoming a scenic highway designation. And I think that's something pretty special if we can achieve that. I'm concerned that there may be another alternative that hasn't been looked at and it might be because of the county line. We can't force because it's not considered a significant impact at this point. We can't force you to look at other alternative sites. But I feel that with the cooperation of Verizon, it can happen. And so I would encourage that and so I, I can't support this at this time.
So my question is, so do you think, what, what evidence do you have that's risen to the threshold that allows us to vote no?
What I would do is if I had the majority vote would just be to say, continue it and get us back that alternative review. I think that's something that's fair to be able to do. I have sat on hearings on cell towers before in areas where the community rose up against it and the company could find another site. And I've seen that multiple times and I'm hopeful that will be the case here.
But, but at this point in time, you don't have evidence that would allow us to, to deny?
I don't have evidence to support it, knowing that, that there are, there's potential alternative locations.
My question is, to meet that federal threshold, do you, do you have evidence to meet the federal threshold for us to deny? That, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. You're, you're saying we haven't reached that. You're just saying you'd like to send it back to-
Yeah, I, I would like them to go back and look at the alternative location, even if it's in a different county.
But, but without, without us reaching the threshold of, of something that, without, without specific evidence that we have a threshold?
It's a voluntary cooperative request.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Got it.
And can we do it legally, is it, it might consider?
We can legally continue it, I think.
But, I mean-
Well, I, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything. So I'd make the motion, but I'd like to, before I make the motion, hear from staff. You got anything more robust for the maintenance plan besides what you have in there already?
I believe that we could add language to Condition 9A about the compliance monitoring and enforcement that essentially adds on to the language that's saying the facility shall be maintained at all times consistent with the original design and shall be immediately repaired if damaged in any way due to acts of vandalism or acts of nature.
All right. And what's the definition of immediately? That's, we'll have a fight about that?
Within, I don't know, within 14 days. It can be whatever you'd like it to be.
Sure. I mean, I, I'm just trying to be honest about not wanting to set us up into another battle. County council, what do you have of recommendation? Is 14 days, is 14 days?
Maybe we should check with the applicant to see if that's feasible?
Great.
It's our every desire to keep this palm tree looking as best as it can. I think 14 days is adequate time for repair.
14 days, 14 days from when the company's been notified.
Some kind of notice, yeah, would be helpful. And then there's a 24-hour phone number that's on the shelter itself.
Great. So I'd like to make the motion to, to approve of, to deny the appeal and move forward with staff's recommended, recommended actions with the one modification on the 14-day immediate, the immediate repair within 14 days of any damage from vandalism or form weather. Thank you.
With the approval of the CUP and the MND, that it be adopted?
All, all of the staff, yeah, all the staff recommended actions.
That motion does pass and thank you for your testimony this afternoon.